I'd like to call the meeting of April 15, 2014, to order. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Francisco Hart.
Here.
Hodgkiss.
Here.
Muriel.
Here.
Rouse.
Here.
White.
Mayor Schneider.
Here. And item one?
Item one, proclamation declaring April 2014 as National Poetry Month.
You both, if you can come on up, why not? It's okay. It's all right. The City of Santa Barbara is widely recognized as a vibrant arts center, providing a spiritual home for creative activity and for writers in particular. And since 1996, the Academy of American Poets has designated April as National Poetry Month to highlight the extraordinary achievements and ongoing legacy of American poets and increase visibility, presence, and accessibility of poetry in our communities and cultural offerings. And the City of Santa Barbara, recognizing of the value of poetry, established a poet laureate position in 2005 in order to direct proper attention and honor to the spoken word by utilizing poetry to celebrate and elevate community events. And current city poet laureate Chris Yost will be leading the community through poetry-focused events and programs throughout the month of April. And the City of Santa Barbara recognizes the value of the Arts Commission's participation in the Poetry Out Loud National Recitation Competition through partnerships with the California Arts Council, National Adowment for the Arts, and National Poetry Foundation, a program that helps high school students master public speaking, build self-confidence, and learn about their literary heritage. So now therefore, I, Helene Schneider, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Santa Barbara, California, do hereby declare April as National Poetry Month in Santa Barbara. And thank you. And you've been a fabulous poet laureate. And this is, you're entering your second year, so thank you very much. Thank you. If you'd like to say anything? There you go.
I would like to thank the city and the members of the council and the mayor for all your support of poetry. There is so much going on, from people reading Shakespeare and Milton to brand-new student poets reading things, and it's all sbpoetry.net. There's a full schedule, and we've got about eight events left this month.
Chris, quick question, if I could. Did you design this book?
I did design that.
It's absolutely gorgeous. It has that great feel to it. Congratulations.
I'd also like to acknowledge that we have a new independent press in Santa Barbara, Gunpowder Press, founded by David Starkey, a previous laureate. So they published it.
Thank you.
Mayor Schneider, members of council, as you mentioned the book, I wanted to give a shout out to. I think the book speaks to the collegiality of the poet laureates, the fact that they're working together. And here you have a previous poet laureate establishing a press to be able to publish the works of our current poet laureate and other poet laureates. So this has been a phenomenal thing that the council has taken on, and it continues to, I think, infuse the interest in poetry and literary arts throughout the county and the community, and I thank you for that. And you want to do your poem?
What? I didn't want to recite it. No. Okay. I also wanted to mention Barry Spax, who was our first poet laureate, who passed away in January. So we're happy to be here in his spirit.
Item two, proclamation declaring April 14 through 18, 2014, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week.
Thank you for being here. Emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers and firefighters is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Santa Barbara Combined Communications Center. And the public safety dispatchers are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And public safety dispatchers are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And public safety dispatchers of the Santa Barbara Police Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. So therefore, I, Helene Schneider, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Santa Barbara, California, do hereby acknowledge and proclaim the week of April 14 through 18, 2014, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, Telecommunicators Week, in the City of Santa Barbara, in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. Thank you so much for the work that you do each and every day and night. Thank you. So thank you. We have some, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Christine Venable and Christine Newhauser, two dispatchers that often don't get their faces seen, and have a few words to read in honor of all the men and women that work down there. I'm often asked if I thought that working in public safety for a living was a profession, and I often answer, no, it's a calling. A huge integral part of that is dispatching. I've found in my fire service career that dispatchers are the unsung heroes of public safety. They miss the excitement of reading, writing on a speeding police car or a fire truck with lights and siren wailing. They can only hear of the bright orange flames leaping from a building, and they do not get to see the joy on the face of worried parents as they see their child begin breathing on its own after it's been given CPR. Dispatchers sit in darkened rooms, looking at computer screens, talking to voices from faces they never see. It's like reading a lot of books, but only half of each one. Dispatchers connect the anxious conversations of terrified victims, angry informants, suicidal citizens, to police officers and firefighters. They are the calming influence of all of them, the quiet competent voices in the night that provide the pillars for bridges of sanity and safety. They're expected to gather information from highly agitated people who can't remember where they live, what their name is, or what they just saw. And then they are to calmly provide all that information to the officers and firefighters without error, the first time and every time. Dispatchers are expected to be able to do at least five things at once and do them all well. While questioning a frantic caller, they must type the information into a computer, tip off another dispatcher, put another caller on hold, listen to an officer request to want a plate for a parking problem, for example. To miss any of the caller's information may be to endanger a firefighter's or police officer's life. Dispatchers have two constant companions, other dispatchers and stress. They depend on one and try and ignore the other. They are chastened awfully, often aggressively, by upset callers, and taken for granted by the public, and all too frequently criticized by officers and firefighters. The rewards they get are inexpensive and infrequent, except for the satisfaction they feel at the end of a shift, having done what they're expected to do. Dispatchers come in all shapes and sizes, all races, both genders, and all ages. They're quiet and outgoing, single or married. No two are alike, yet they're all the same. They're people who selected, who were selected in a difficult hiring process to do an impossible job. They are as different as snowflakes, but they have one thing in common: they care about people, and they enjoy being the lifeline of society, that steady voice in a storm, the one who knows how to handle every emergency and does so with style, grace, and uncompromised competence. Dispatchers play many roles: therapists, doctor, lawyer, teacher, weatherman, guidance counselor, psychologist, priest, secretary, supervisor, politician, and reporter. And few people must jump through the emotional hoops on a trip through the joy of one caller's birthday, to the fear of another caller's burglary in progress, to the anger of a neighbor blocked in their driveway, and then back to the birthday caller, all in a possible two-minute timeframe. The emotional roller coaster stops, rolls to a stop after an eight- or 10-hour shift, and they're expected to walk to their car with steady feet, no queasiness in their stomach because they are dispatchers. If they hold it in, they're too closed. If they talk about it, they're whiners. If it bothers them, it adds more stress. If it doesn't, they question themselves, wondering why. Dispatchers are expected to have the compassion of Mother Teresa, the wisdom of Solomon, the interviewing skills of Oprah Winfrey, the gentleness of Florence Nightingale, the patience of Job, the voice of Barbra Streisand, the knowledge of Einstein, the answers of Dear Abby, the humor of David Letterman, the investigative still, skills of Sergeant Joe Friday, and the endurance of an energy, Energizer Bunny. Is it any wonder that many drop out during training? It's a unique and talented position, talented person who can do this job and do it well. And it is fitting and proper that we take a few minutes or hours this week to honor you for the job that each of you do. The recognition is overdue, and it is insufficient, but it is sincere. I have tried to do your job, and I have failed. It takes a special person with unique skills. I admire you, and I thank you for the thankless job that you do. You are heroes, and I am proud to work with you.
That was just lovely. That was a form of poetry in of itself, wasn't it? That was lovely. Thank you. Okay. We have any changes to the agenda?
Just one, Madam Mayor. We would recommend that after the public comments, that we adjourn for a brief closed session on item 15.
Item 15, right. Okay. And we'll do that. So why don't we go to public comment, and then we will report out of closed session and then move on to the consent calendar from there. Okay. We have two minutes here at the podium there. We'll start with public comment with Kenneth Locke, to be followed by Nancy McCrady.
My name is Kenneth Locke. I went before the school board, as I mentioned to you last week, and did a public comment. I talked about the mind-body integration, and the, what I thought would be good to do, talk about is the spiritual component, or spirituality. And it turns out that we're going to be entering into a spiritual age, I'm thinking. And when we enter into a spiritual age, we have to become spiritual beings. This is what, it's good to, while you're in a spiritual age, to be a spiritual being. And I'm aware of this stuff because I've been raised up as a teacher of two disciplines in relation to them being spiritual practices. And the whole reason why we had the abstract art movement 20th century was, it was actually for me to actually become spiritually enlightened to how painting is a spiritual practice. And when you realize the truth about that, then you realize what isn't spiritual and the downside of it. And it turns out that when an artist actually makes a contribution or associates themselves with the art market, that's not good for their spiritual, spiritual life. And it really is not going to take, take, it's not going to be, we're not going to do this in a spiritual age because it's not, and this will actually integrate a community because when you, we become spiritual beings, it kind of has a way of integrating us versus the other side of the coin. And I'm also the, say, the spiritual teacher of the spiritual practice of, through athletics, through tennis, and then the idea of how the mind-body integration, having complete knowledge, integrated exercise, how that provides the foundation, and also ambidextrous for a true spiritual relationship. Just thought I'd pass this information along to you. Have a good day.
Nancy McCrady will be followed by Bob Hanson.
Last September, a young man shot four homeless people, killing one. A few months earlier, authorities reported that two young men beat a homeless man to death with a tire iron, just for fun. In Santa Barbara, over the years, we've had the Kenneth Burr murder, Michael Stephenson, whose perpetrator said it was just like sticking a pig, and others beaten and abused because of fear-mongering and bias. The National Coalition for the Homeless has been recording these anti-homeless attacks since 1999. And this year, and in years past, the number of lethal anti-homeless hate crimes counted by the NCH exceeds the government's tally of deadly hate crimes in all other categories. The FBI does not track anti-homeless attacks since it does not categorize the homeless as a protected group. The executive director of the National Coalition attributes the increase in lethal attacks in part to the growing prevalence of laws aimed at punishing homeless people for minor infractions, like sleeping on the street, panhandling, and drinking in public. It is like looking at a campaign of dehumanization. And I often wonder, why is it that the human animal has to be such a predatory sort? We always, over the years, have had to pick out people and turn them into something less than human so we can destroy them or try to destroy them. So we gotta, we gotta look at ourselves and why, and find out why we're doing this. And over the years, with the blacks and the Okies and the Jewish and the, and the American Indians, we've all been this way, and, and we've got to stop this. We've got to look at ourselves.
Thank you.
Bob Hanson will be followed by Phil Walker.
Do you guys want?
You can hand that to the clerk. Sure.
I think I've got enough for all of you. Two of you have it already.
I know. I have a sign, and it says, President Obama signed an executive order for homeless citizens to include in the hate crime statistics. Well, it's kind of hard when something happens in places like Michael Stephenson. Now, did the police record that as a hate crime when he got killed up at Alameda Park? They really, they all, they're not, they're not part of the hate crime statistics, so they don't record homeless. They record other groups. So that's a problem. The big lie in Santa Barbara is State Street. You cannot walk on State Street. It's aggressive. Oh, there's fear, there's propaganda mongering and everything. I say enjoy State Street. It's a beautiful place. I was talking to my doctor, because I'm on a 15-day water fast. I think it's going to be my last day because I have medical issues. And he said, you know what? Walk on State Street. It's a beautiful place. Now, there might be somebody, and some of the homeless even call some of the kids in black, we call whatever the name you want to call them, gutter punks. They hate the gutter punks, the kids. But not all of them are bad, I don't think. There's probably somebody that acts up. There's somebody acts up that's city councilperson probably once in a while. But maybe we just wash it off and go on. Nelson Mandela quoted, "We learn to hate, and we can learn to love. It's better for your heart." I'm not saying love homeless or gutter punks. I'm just saying, we need to stop calling them names. That name and hatred leads into violence. And we've had that with Michael Stephenson. Those kids probably heard it enough times, and they were out on a joy thing on that Friday night. So all I'm asking is that President Obama has said, make me, and have laws. We need to do that. He can do it. You can do it too, Mayor.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Phil Walker will be followed by Alicia Drew.
Excuse me. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, and members of the city council. This item, it's not the terrible tragedy that happened with the FedEx and bus, but adjacent to that, one of the headline items, Mayor seeks quake safety ratings. And Mayor Garcetti of LA is proposing a rating system for multifamily housing and office buildings. And I won't go this far, he's also trying to include a retrofit system or process into it. And, you know, it's been a long time since the Whittier Narrows 1987 quake, the Landers earthquake, which I experienced firsthand in 1992, which drove the Lower Reservoir early warning system. Took me two years to push that through. 1989 Loma Prieta, then we had the Northridge quake in 1994. So essentially, since 94, we've had a, sort of a deficit. And, you know, people are sensing there is something coming, and, you know, people are good, good indicators of concern. So I'm not proposing a retrofit system. The city did have, have a brief time in the late 80s where they retrofitted the URM, unreinforced masonry buildings on the State Street corridor. But there are a number, many multifamily soft-story structures. There's some nonductile office buildings, you know, pre-'76. So there is a concern, possibly a warning system where you do give people notice that the building is suspect would be a good call. Thank you.
Alicia Drew will be followed by Reggie Drew, and the final speaker will be Ethan.
Mayor Schneider and the honorable members of the city council. My name is Alicia Drew, and I've come to this meeting for the purpose of providing my support for Aaron Boucher, the proprietor of 805 Roadside.
I'm going to stop you right there. So if you want to speak on that item, you have to wait till that item shows up on the agenda, not during public comment. Okay? So hold on to that, and I'll just keep this slip for that moment in time. So Mr. Drew, Reggie Drew, are you in the same situation? Okay. Great. So I'll just wait till that item comes on the agenda. And then Ethan.
My name is Ethan Shankman, and I'm a poet, and I write poetry. And I thought that for, in respect to National Poetry Month, I would share one. Daniel to Houdini, Diana to your grace, in or over the service tomorrow and today. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That concludes public comment. If you could read item 15?
Item 15, Community Development Director Appointment.
Okay. So we'll recess briefly into closed session, and when we come out, we'll anticipate an announcement. Hold. Okay. I'm going to call the council meeting back to order, and we do have a report out from item number 15, the closed session. Mr. Armstrong.
Miss Madam Mayor, members of the council, in closed session, the city council approved my appointment of Mr. George Buell as the city's Community Development Director. Mr. Buell currently serves as the Community Development Director in the City of Oceanside. Prior to that, he was the chief planner for the City of St. Clemente. He brings a wealth of knowledge about California planning law, especially working in a coastal community, and we're really excited about having, having him join our team with the City of Santa Barbara.
Great. And Mr. Buell, you're here. If you'd like to come on up, and congratulations, and welcome to the City of Santa Barbara.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I am George Buell, and it's a pleasure to be here, and thank you so much for your appointing me as your next Community Development Director. Over the course of the next period of time, I realized that I have an awful lot to learn with respect to the community, with respect to you, and how things work here. And I look forward to that learning process, and I also look forward to sharing some of the things that I have learned over the course of my career. As I was thinking about what I might say this afternoon, it was really interesting to come to realize that in the communities in California where I have served, each of them have been along the El Comune Real. And I can think of no better community in California than to be here, serving you at this moment. I look forward to continuing the tradition of excellence that Paul Casey and Jim Armstrong have brought to the city, along with the leadership of the city council. And again, thank you so much, and I look forward to seeing you, perhaps under a little bit more pressure as projects come forward, but it's a pleasure to be serving you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great. And I'd like to extend my thanks and gratitude to Betty Weiss, who was serving as Acting Community Development Director, who said right off the bat, I'm, there's no way I'm applying for this job, so, but she was willing to step up and take both her current duties and the acting director's duties, so, and did so very, we've got a hedge ordinance out of it while she was here. I mean, that's huge. So thank you, Betty. Okay. So we have the consent calendar. There's a couple of items to read.
Item four, adoption of ordinance to establish air quality design standards for development near Highway 101. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, amending Title 22 of the Santa Barbara Municipal Code by adding Chapter 22.65, establishing design standards for new development near Highway 101 to implement Policy ER 7 of the 2011 General Plan. And item five, Measure A Five-Year Local Program of Projects for Fiscal Years 2015 through 2019, public hearing. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, adopting the Measure A Five-Year Local Program of Projects for Fiscal Years 2015 through 2019.
Thank you. Without further objection, we'll wait for the readings. Anyone need to take an item off, or is there a motion to?
Item four.
Item four? Okay. And any other items? Okay. This was the adoption of the air quality design standards. Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had several questions about my vote on this topic, so I just wanted to clarify that quickly. I have absolutely no doubt about the good intentions behind this. I also, from experience, having spent part of my childhood in a house next to a freeway, I realize that sometimes people make those kinds of choices for economic reasons, and I think that's something that we need to allow people to make their own choices about. I, I don't know the numbers, but I wouldn't be surprised if there are whole cities in the Los Angeles basin with worse air quality than within 250 feet of the freeway in Santa Barbara. So, again, I have no doubt of the good intentions behind this, but I'll be voting against it.
Okay. So we'll vote on this separately. Mr. White?
I would move approval of this item.
Okay. Item four.
Yes.
There's a motion for item four. Motion in seconded. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay. So that's 5-2. And is there any other item to be taken off, or is there a motion for the balance of the consent calendar?
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Okay. Moved in seconded. All in favor? Aye. Great. Thank you. Okay. On to item number 11.
Item 11, Presentation and Amended Contract for Air Service Development.
Okay. Ms. Johns.
Good afternoon, Mayor Schneider and councilmembers. I'm Hazel Johns, the Acting Airport Director. And with me today is Chris Warren, who is a vice president with InterVista Consulting. And as you know, in the last couple of weeks and months, it seems like, we've had several comments about air service in Santa Barbara and some of the changes that have taken place. So I've asked Chris to come and provide us with an update on the industry, and then also what's taking place here in Santa Barbara on our strategy to maintain and hopefully improve air service. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Chris.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. And thank you, Hazel. Like I said, my name's Chris Warren. I'm a vice president with InterVista Consulting Group. We're headquartered out of Washington, DC. I actually work from an office down in South Orange County, so I've got a great drive to navigate home after the meeting. But first of all, I'd like to mention that we do a lot of work with a lot of airports throughout the United States, and Hazel and her team do a fantastic job, and we're very proud of the, the work we do to support them. What we want to do really briefly is go through, and go through and give you a little bit of an overview of the airline industry, and we'll keep it brief, but we feel it's important before, to do this before we talk about our efforts, is it really kind of gives you a little bit of background to kind of the headwinds we're going up against. If you look, and this is, this is in the year 2000, if you look at what the 12 biggest airlines were in the United States, you see a lot of names that you just don't see anymore. You see TWA and airlines like TWA and Northwest, and a couple other, America West, and airlines which necessarily haven't, not necessarily have gone bankrupt, but through a series of a couple of bankruptcies and mergers and acquisitions, those 12 are essentially down to, have, have been reduced to five. And so when you think about in the airline industry, the old, what they used to call hub-and-spoke airlines, the traditional airlines, we're really, after the latest round of mergers, down to three. We're down to American Airlines, Delta, and United. And then what's happened is always happens typically in an industry when there's a lot of a shakeout, you end up with new carriers that kind of come onto the scene. But kind of the idea behind this is, as we go out and we pursue air service, if we were looking to do this 10, 12, 14 years ago, we'd have a lot of people to pick up the phone and call. And what's happened through the, through the course of the last few years is you've had a lot of consolidation in this industry. So is the airline industry in the United States profitable? I, I think the short answer is yes and no. You know, what's happened over the last three or four years, as we've gotten over the, the last couple of years of the recession, and this is, this is from a, a traditional kind of profit and loss statement, this is what is known as operating margin. So you'll see over the last three or four years, you've seen an airline, this is, these are just the largest airlines, the six largest airlines in the US. You see that we have, that the industry has returned to profitability over the last three or four years. That being said, even in, even in what's considered kind of a prosperous time in the airline industry, the margins are maybe half what they are for the general S&amp;P 500. So, again, what the airlines would tell you is, yes, we're making money. We're making a little bit of money. For the money that we invest into our product, we're not making much. And oh, by the way, we're still one good geopolitical or fuel shock away from being back where we were five years ago. I'll go through this somewhat briefly, but, you know, again, as we talk- I'll go through this somewhat briefly, but you know, again, as we talked about what the big, large, traditional airlines are, your airlines like Delta and American and United, again, we're all talking, all of these guys make between kind of three and roughly 2 and 9% as a profit as a percentage of the total revenue they take in. And as a point of comparison, in the fourth quarter, Apple's margin was 30%, right? So it's a little bit of an extreme example. But again, I think for, you know, I think the good news as you look at this industry from a stability perspective is for the first time that I can remember, and I've been doing this for about, off and on, for about 20 years, there's not an airline that when you get on and go buy a ticket, you have to worry, is this airline going to be out of business when I take my flight? You know, there's not that. Typically, there's always been the, somebody circling on the phone, the bankruptcy, and we're not really there. So I'm sure the last few flights you've taken, you've been very, very lucky to have a middle seat or any seat next to you that would be open. And this has been a real fundamental change as well. As recently as 15 years ago, there's a metric called load factor, which with a couple of nuances, just represents the percentage of seats that are filled. As recently as, right before 9/11, that number was in the 60s. And now almost 85% of every seat that goes out on an airplane is full. So what that means is from a personal creature comfort perspective, your flights are full. But what that also means is for a variety of reasons, that number probably can't get much higher. There are always going to be refunds and seats that go out unsold. So what that means is the only way that the airlines at this point can, for the most part, generate incremental revenue and continue to grow as a public company is through fares. And so without getting into too much detail, what this graph represents is for an average 1,000-mile one-way trip between two points within the United States, what's that average fare? And right now, it's about $170. Again, that number's up literally almost 25% from what we saw four years ago. So what the airlines would tell you is that's great, from a consumer perspective and from a, you know, from a community perspective, and which we've seen through consolidation, again, you're going to see that in your airfare as you move forward. And again, as the airlines continue to look to increase revenue, this is going to be the primary lever they're going to be able to pull. So going on at the same time, and the biggest thing that we've been dealing with is in our air service development efforts, if you go back roughly seven years, and the phrase domestic departures literally just represents one airplane flight between two points in the United States, we are down almost 20% in domestic departures over a seven-year period. So that started with the recession and airlines kind of pared back because, and then it literally kind of combined with the beginning of the recession was a point where oil hit almost $150. So airlines at that point were in survival mode. But what's happened since then, and what has been a little bit different from these incidents in the past, is typically when the economy were to recover, airlines would go back, put more seats into the marketplace, and there'd be these battles for market share. That's actually not happening right now. And so from an air service development perspective, as Hazel and her team, as we work with them, and go out and try to generate new air service, literally departures continue to decrease. How has that impacted Southern California? There's a lot of different colored bars on that graph, but one of the things that's happened with this decline in departures has been the departures that are there have been concentrated among bigger airports. So what this graph represents is if you started at the year 2007 and then pushed forward to the end of last year, what is the percentage of departures going back to that base of six years ago? And you see LAX is within 5% or 6% of what their departure level was back in 2006. Long Beach is close as well. That's a little bit of a different situation because there's one carrier that primarily operates out of there. But the smaller airports within the LA basin and surrounding region, and if you go across, that's Palm Springs, San Diego, Orange County, Santa Barbara, Burbank, and Ontario, what we've seen through the secondary airports throughout the region is that services decreased pretty significantly. So again, we lay all this as backdrop. As we continue our service development efforts, we've got some reasonably significant headwinds throughout the industry, particularly in what we would call the non-major hub airports. So what are some of those challenges? What's happened with airlines, particularly now that oil, and I'm going to skip around on some of the ones on the left-hand side, with oil at roughly $90 a barrel, the regional jet, which is obviously the type of airplane that has been a backbone for service with some smaller airports, the smaller regional jets that have typically served that, the economics really don't work when you've got $90 oil. So what a lot of the airlines are going to do at this point, and they're beginning to work through this now, is they're buying larger regional jets. So 70 seats and 90 seats. So the economics work better for them and it's more easy for them to be profitable. The problem is for smaller communities, you've got more seats to fill and it's a little bit tougher to fill. Obviously, by definition, it's a little tougher to fill a 70-seat airplane than a 50-seat airplane. There's a little bit of a nuance now in that the FAA has gone in and up the required training hours to become a new pilot for a regional airline. And there's a significant pilot shortage right now within the regional airline industry. You know, as I'm sure you guys have talked about, we recently lost our American Airlines service to LAX and that pilot shortage, particularly in the short term, played a huge role in that decision, as the airlines are scrambling to try to fill the service that they have. I'll skip over to the right. You know, what are some of those opportunities? Again, where it's also a threat that the airlines are kind of working through and changing the types of airplanes they fly, there's also a benefit to it. You know, where we are able to support the larger airplanes, those airplanes tend to have first-class cabins, they're bigger airplanes, and so they end up with a better product. You might even see some of the old propeller airplanes come back into the market, although the newer propeller airplanes are actually a really good product. You know, one of the things, I'll go to number three, is you know, Hazel and us and our team have really been working on some creative approaches to work with the airlines. We'll get into that and how we do that a little bit later. And quite honestly, if we continue to go down this road with air service to small communities continuing to dwindle, you know, there's some question, does it become a legislative issue at some point? Because 35 states in this country receive the majority of their air service from regional airlines. So. So are things getting any better? You know, things have somewhat at least plateaued. Right now, the number of US flights, as we call departures through the first eight months of this year, are down by about 2%. So again, we're not seeing that real draconian drop that we saw five or six years ago, but things are still somewhat bottoming out. We do think we are a little bit more bullish as we get through the next 12 to 18 months that things will improve a little bit, but there still is a drop in departures. And so that's kind of where we are from an industry perspective. So again, airlines are profitable, things have stabilized throughout the industry, but again, there continues to be this trend of fewer and fewer departures to domestic destinations in the United States. So with that as a backdrop, let's walk through a little bit about what we do. One of the things that we really focus on when we communicate with airlines is we've done an analysis called a leakage study. Because what's important for us, one of the things that's really important for us as an airport to know are people from around the core area around Santa Barbara flying from the Santa Barbara Airport. And there are ways, the airline industry's a little bit weird, there's all sorts of publicly available data. We know every route, how many people fly, what they pay, but we can also go in and do literally an analysis by zip code. And the last leakage study we performed a few years ago, we found that literally less than half of the people in what we call this core primary catchment area around Santa Barbara were utilizing Santa Barbara Airport. So we're talking about, and one of the things we'll talk about later, is we have a plan to update that study. But one of our key focuses, a couple of things. Number one, keep people in Santa Barbara using the Santa Barbara Airport. Obviously, some of that's on us, because in order to do that, you have to have air service that people can use, and so we understand that. So that's one of the things we work on. We also, quite frankly, see an opportunity for the area to the south as you get down toward, past Ventura and into the, down toward Thousand Oaks. That drive down the 405 to LAX at times of the day, I'm sure I don't have to tell you, can be somewhat brutal. So you know, as we have a more and more viable air service product here, the ability to bring people up to use the airport, particularly since we have the new terminal, I think there's some opportunity for us there as well. This is a little, probably got a little bit too much detail with numbers here, but this is the current service we have from Santa Barbara. So let me kind of walk through these. With American Airlines, we have non-stop service to Phoenix. And the way to read that is we have five daily non-stops with an average of, each flight has an average of 58 seats on it. We talked about kind of that annual load factor number, the percentage of seats that are full. So that's how you read that. And then the fare premium, what that is meant to represent is, there tends to be a little bit of a reputation that Santa Barbara's a really, really high-fare airport. That's actually not really the case. You know, the airlines like to see a fair premium, right? Because that's part of their revenue equation. But outside of Alaska, who we tend to do very, very well with, all of our fares are within a couple of 3% of what the airlines do in total. So we're not really a high-fare airport and we're really working to kind of move away from that reputation. But again, we have non-stop service to Phoenix, on Alaska Airlines, Seattle and Portland, on United, San Francisco, Los Angeles, and Denver. We've talked to the planning group at United, the propeller flights to Los Angeles, they're going to upgrade to bigger airplanes this summer, and we're working to try to get that beyond the summer. And then we also have there's a low-cost carrier called Frontier that serves Denver. I'll go through this quickly, but as we look at markets that we focus on, and what are the largest markets? Where do people travel from our airport to today? Outside of the markets we have service, you know, some of the things we focus on, we've had service in the past, the Salt Lake City, and I apologize, these are the airport codes, but some of the other ones and some things we're really focused on are so much of the bigger hubs in the middle of the country, markets like Chicago and Dallas and Houston. So as we continue to have conversations, we recognize what the benefit would be to being able to get people non-stop into one of those hubs in the middle of the country. We also recognize, and this one quite frankly is a much tougher case to make, is that the state of California and Santa Barbara is a perfect example. There are a lot of what we call point-to-point markets, that it's just very difficult to get in between. And I think the most obvious one from here is Sacramento. I worked for, been planning for a small regional airline about six or seven years ago that served that market. We know there's a case there. You know, we kind of run into this issue to where it doesn't really fit an airline's business model, but I can tell you, we are continuously and feverishly pestering carriers to try to see if we can kind of get any sort of creative approach to try to solve some of these issues within-state service. Bluntly, it's a tougher case to make, but we continue to do so. Again, San Diego I would throw in there as well, but we recognize Sacramento was a real need. Okay, so how do we do, so what do we do? We've talked about the industry, we've talked about kind of our service profile and how we perform. So how do we, what do we do to try to mitigate some of this? So here are some of our key goals for the next, for I guess now we're a quarter into this year. One of the things, and this recent issue with the service loss to LAX brought up, you know, as I've talked about, not only do we go out and look for service to additional markets, but given the fact that the industry has lost, shed roughly 20% of its flights between US destinations, we need to make sure we play defense in the markets we have now. So we always are engaged with the carriers to make sure that we understand performance. Is there anything they need from us that we can work with them on to make sure that our current routes are doing well? We've talked about this additional hub connectivity. What that essentially means is, obviously there would be some benefit to service into a market like a Chicago or Dallas and markets where we could actually flow people to markets on the East Coast. We've talked about in-state service. And like I mentioned on one of the charts up toward the front, there have been a rash of new, what are called kind of low-cost carriers in the airline industry that we continue to have conversations with. And the last one, which again, if we're able to, as we work through and hopefully are able to update our leakage study, I think now that we have this new terminal, we have a much more, I think, palatable case to make to the carriers. How do we do that? Really quickly, we have conferences that we attend. It's funny, we use the term speed dating, where literally all of the airlines and all of the airports get together. We have these weird 20-minute meetings and we present our business case. And we use those primarily as background, because what we try to do is you can't make a business case for a route in 20 minutes. But what you can do is you can establish a relationship, you can have an initial dialogue, and then kind of hopefully that kind of morphs into future discussions. Some of this stuff can take years. And some of this stuff, we've been having conversations for months and or years, and we continue to try. But then, as the dialogue continues to kind of push forward, what we do at that point is as you get closer and closer to hopefully having success, we'll actually go to an airline headquarters and we'll meet with our middle and senior management and we'll, you know, we'll market the brand of Santa Barbara. There are some qualitative cases we make, as well as kind of the quantitative business case. So you know, in general, that's kind of what we're doing. We recognize that air service is a vital component to the community and we continue to work continuously to try to promote that.
Ms. Johns, did you have anything else before we, we have some questions up here?
After the questions, I just need to come back to get the second item on the agenda approved.
Sure. And do you have any speaker slips on this item? No. Okay, Mr. Hotchkiss?
What are the, it's got to be sort of a formula that, after which people decide to go elsewhere rather than to come to Santa Barbara, to fly out of Santa Barbara. And it's, I would think, a function of driving time and cost and parking cost when you're in LAX or Burbank or whatever. Do you, can you tell me those numbers?
Yeah, it's, there are a lot of, to your point, there are a lot of quantifiable ways to look at it. There are also a lot of kind of more squishy qualitative issues. I think in addition to, and stepping back a little bit, one of the ways the airlines kind of segment customers is between, pretty straightforward, between business traffic and leisure traffic. And so I think that formula varies obviously differently between the two. You know, I think to your point, if you're a family of four and you're going to be gone for a week and you know, that math equation is quite a bit different than if you're on a $900 business trip going to Minneapolis. So, but to your point, I think it's non-stop service, which is obviously a bigger deal on the business end, right? If you're, a three-hour connection can mean missing or not making a meeting. Clearly fare is part of it. I would say even things like, on the business side, frequent flyer loyalty. I mean, there are a lot of people on, I used to work for airlines, it wasn't a big deal. Now that I'm not, I'm very beholden to my status and my frequent flyer miles. And I can tell you that airlines have put a lot of focus over the last few years on improving their product for their top-tier customers. So things like, are you in elite status and things like that. So I think there's just a wide range. I would almost think of it as a matrix. There's, I think it's different for business and leisure customers. And then exactly to your point, I think there's just a handful of items. But I think one of the key ones, as we recognize, is you've got to, to put it in eighth-grade terms, you've got to have seats. You've got to have service and you've got to have service to places people want to go. And that's what we work with literally on a daily basis.
Is personal convenience high on that squishy list, if I can call it that?
Yeah. Yeah, no, I think it is. And I think, again, going back to the whole bifurcating between business and leisure traffic, obviously for a business passenger, clearly, right? And you know, think about if you've got a 5:30 flight out of LAX on a Friday night, I mean, you're losing half of a workday if you live up the coast. So you know, if it's a Saturday at 2 o'clock and you've got a family of four going on vacation, maybe you're a little bit more amenable to making that drive if there's a cost saving. So you know, I think when, you know, for instance, one of the things that we always sell to airlines is that I think a lot of airlines, particularly headquartered in the middle of the country, just think of Santa Barbara as this beautiful upscale leisure destination, which it obviously is. But we make a huge effort to communicate that there's a strong business component to this market. And so again, to show that, and they can see that in their fare data that they see, but to show, look, if you bring service into this market, not only are you bringing people into a beautiful leisure destination, we've got a strong corporate component of people here that will fly out of here at solid fares, which is important to them. So yeah, I mean, I think there's two ways to look at it. Not only the personal convenience of the passenger, but the airlines on the flip side need to see what that mix is as well when they make these decisions.
Mr. Hart?
Why was the domestic conference canceled? I saw that on the slide that that was an opportunity.
Oh, gosh. That's some weird kind of intra-industry stuff. There are a couple of three different international groups that put on these marketing conferences and there was a merger between a couple of them. Typically, there was this cadence to where there would be one in March, roughly March, and then another one in June, and they were kind of close together anyway. So they've just kind of combined. And then there are, there's another firm that does these in the US, does them in Europe and Asia and Africa, but for bigger airports. But I think for the ones in the US, the one in March probably isn't going to happen going into the future, which puts a lot of focus on this one we have in Edmonton in June.
Okay, so it's just not, it's an anomaly, not a trend?
No, no, it was much more about kind of a merger within the, that part of the industry.
The other question I had is, it seems like, you know, demographically, that we would have disproportionately more frequent flyers and more, you know, elite-status flyers for the airlines. I don't know if that's true or not, but it seems kind of intuitive. And is there a way to capture those folks, you know, consumer power within the industry to, I don't know if you can market to them directly, I don't know if we know who they are, I don't know if, it would seem like those people would have a very vested interest in trying to, you know, work with their carriers to say.
Well, and I think, you know, the airlines have all that data and airlines, you know, particularly the three big, what we call network carriers, which is now down to American, Delta, and United. You know, there's a group, there's all sorts of groups, obviously, but one that does kind of the planning of the routes and the new routes. But there's another one that literally just does pure marketing. And so they have anybody that flies, excuse me, when you buy an airline ticket, all that information in your reservation is all there and they know how many times you fly. So.
But there's no access. We don't have any access to that.
No, that's, that's obviously a huge effort on the airline side. And if you notice now, there's so much more focus on, you know, if you go and buy an airline ticket, if you're not in an elite status, you have, you know, you only have access to so many seats unless you pay for them. So things like that, the airlines are, continue to put more and more of a focus on that kind of high-level frequent flyer. Again, it's tougher for us, because that's just not publicly available data that's out there, but obviously through the community groups that, you know, we market throughout the community.
So that's the only way to do it. It's like informally through community organizations, trying to reach out from our end with some creative marketing effort to talk to those people, to get them to talk to their, okay.
And we continue to do that. And for instance, one of the things we'll do is, I don't want to get into too much detail, but when we go and talk to an airline, you know, we bring people from the community. And we, you know, rather than just the, hey, there are 60 people per day that fly from here to here, we really sell the brand and really market the community. And to your point, market the fact that we've got a strong corporate. And to your point, market the fact that we've got a strong corporate base with a lot of high-end passengers. So you've got what's called, you know, there's a measurement that looks at the people that start here and travel out or come here. And for a lot of our markets, for a lot of big leisure destinations, obviously more of the focus is people coming into town, our balance is, our relationship is pretty balanced to a lot of markets. And I, and we communicate that to airlines, is we've got a great leisure destination, but we've got a strong elite corporate traveler base here that you can work with as well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Warren, one of the threats, I think, to regional aircraft, as you mentioned before, was shortage of pilots. And apparently, that's obviously across the nation.
Yes.
But the problem being, as I understand it, the increased amount of hours required to get to that level, of course, the expense of attaining those hours versus what they pay regional pilots to fly the plane. So what's the industry outlook and what's the industry strategy to, because we're going to need to have regional service, or it's just going to be strictly hubs and nothing else at some point in time?
This is funny, Hazel and I were talking about this early today, because the situation has really kind of literally just exploded over the last couple of months, right? This has really become a hot-button issue throughout the industry. To your point, and I think it was, I think it was 250 hours before, but now any regional pilot has to have 1,500 hours in order to qualify to become a commercial pilot. And further to your point, for the most part, these pilots are training, new pilots are paying for their own training. And so what one of the promises were before is, again, to your point, regional pilots don't make a lot for the most part when they're 22, 23-years-old going through this program. But what has happened in the past was, there was kind of this subtle, you knew what the job flow was, because the big airlines own the regional airlines. You'd fly on a regional airplane for a little while, and after a few years, you kind of had this de facto promise of an interview with a big airline. And that was kind of where the payoff was for your, for the check you were writing for training. Well, a couple of things has happened, have happened. Number one, paying for 1,500 hours behind a stick is a lot different than 250, and we're talking tens of thousands of dollars. And for the most part, the major airlines don't own the regional airlines anymore. So this formal process to kind of get pilots through to the major airlines, they're still the primary source for pilots, but it's not quite what it once was. So to your point, it is an enormous issue. It's an enormous issue, and that's why I said it's really kind of exacerbated over the past few months. You know, there's a couple of ways this thing could go, but for right now, I can tell you that the airlines are struggling with it. But there was a statistic on one of these slides that 35 states, like I said, in this country, have the majority of their air service on what are called regional equipment. So at some point, whether it gets, whether it becomes involved in some sort of legislative process or becomes kind of this public issue, I'm not sure, but at some point, I can tell you, yes, the airlines are wrestling with it, and something's going to have to come to fruition over the next couple of years or so, because it is a large issue. And, well, I'm sorry, one more thing to exacerbate, the smaller airplanes, the 50-seat airplanes, like I said, don't make a lot of economic sense for the airlines right now. So once again, you've got that on top of everything else on the regional airlines as well. So yeah, there is, one of the things we talked about, there are some challenges for smaller airports right now. But, but again, to the point, I think from a long-term, be it economics, public policy, whatever that might be, I can't imagine a scenario in which regional flying just doesn't happen, right? There's just, it's too much of an integrated network and this, of fabric of the airline networks these days.
So you said, because I get this question all the time, so I want to ask you directly. The Santa Barbara-Sacramento trip, very popular, it was full, and you said it's extremely difficult to keep that going. And that seems counterintuitive to people saying, well, why? I mean, it was a full flight and people liked it. And so can you explain in terms of the industry, why it is so difficult to maintain that route?
Yep. So when we talk about kind of the large hub-and-spoke airlines, those are the ones, American, Delta, and United. As their networks and kind of their route maps have evolved over the years, literally almost everything they fly goes in and out of one of their hubs, okay? So look at our service now, it's Denver and Phoenix, and it was Salt Lake City and markets like that. So a market like just flying what we call in the industry point-to-point service from a market like Santa Barbara to Sacramento, doesn't really fit with their business model. Now, there are some creative people at the airlines, and, you know, that we have, have some people that are willing to take a look at things and say, hey, look, maybe we could kind of make this work and maybe we couldn't. But again, it's just a weird, it's a, it's a kind of, I wouldn't say one-off, but it's a bit of a unique circumstance, is it just doesn't really fit into the thousands of routes that a lot of the airlines fly. You know, would it be profitable? You know, from my experience, it's, there's a possibility, but just bluntly, it's not something that just jumps off the page, that it's such a unique opportunity that the airlines would take a look and think, and do something completely outside of what they would normally do. Now, that doesn't mean we give up, right? There are a lot of smaller kind of niche carriers that we've talked to that operate a little bit different business models. But, you know, it's been a challenge. Like I said, I worked for a small carrier called Express Jet that actually flew that market for years. That was, I kind of ran the planning group there. We did pretty well with it. And then a couple of other carriers have been in and out of the market as well, but I will say this, just, we're, we're trying.
So what is it that we can do as a council, if anything, to assist you in making something like this come back? Because we get it all the time.
Yeah, well, I can tell you, and again, this is outside of the scope of this conversation probably, but so I'm just going to talk in general directional stuff. There have been a lot of communities that have subsidized air service throughout this country. And I think that trend has really deepened over the last few years because of graphs like we just saw, that 20% of air service has declined, right? So, you know, there are FAA regulations about direct funding that, and so what tends to happen for the most part is a lot of that subsidization has come from corporate backers. And, you know, at some point, you can do a calculation that says, I can justify writing a check for X because of the time efficiency saving that my 85 people a day that go from here to here. And so we've seen a lot of those circumstances. You know, off the record, Sacramento, I guess I'm on the record.
You're definitely on the record.
Yeah, I'm on the microphone. Put this subtly. You know, a market like Sacramento is probably a little bit more of a challenge, because it tends to be more of a government than a corporate market, even if you wanted to go down that road. But we have seen a lot of communities do that. You know, from just a pure market perspective, again, we just continue to have conversations. And there have been a handful of kind of unique business models that have come up over the last few years, and some carriers that, you know, it's a lot smaller airplane, maybe, and maybe it's not the time of day, but we continue to try to get creative with some of these carriers. But, you know, I'll just be blunt, we're continuing to have conversations, but it is, it's a tough push from a pure market perspective.
When we lost the San Jose flight, I know there were conversations with the Greta Chamber and the local chamber of just that kind of creative thought process. But that's been a few years now, and I'm sure if the topic was brought up again to San Jose, which is more of the corporate market piece, there, I'm sure there'll be people lining up on the corporate side to help something, because they were, they were ready to go, because it's a, it is a time crunch, and that's really the only way. You're not going to drive to LA to fly up to San Jose.
I think out of the, out of the markets that we had on that chart that showed kind of the big opportunities within California, San Jose, to your point, exactly fits that profile of what would, what would probably have the most potential to have corporate backing. I will say this, again, last thing I want to do, sound negative here, but, you know, one of the other things that the regionals are now going, going back to your pilot shortage, we've had regionals that have had to cancel routes because they can't find pilots, LAX for us. And so now we're running into the issue where, oh my gosh, we've got to find enough pilots just to cover the routes that are our core route. So, you know, there are some nuances back and forth, but I think directionally, you get a group of people willing to kind of support that, and I think an airline would be receptive.
Okay, well, maybe that's a conversation for another time.
There you go.
But thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you. Ms. Johns?
Yes, Mayor Schneider and Council, the second item on the agenda is an amendment to the contract that we have with InterVista to add to the scope of work the leakage study, and then also the funds, the compensation for that study. When we negotiated the agreement last fall, that was not part of our list of duties or scope of work. And at this point, we feel it is important to update the study that was done in 2009. So with your concurrence, I would ask that you approve the amendment. The funds are available in the Airport Department budget, and that would take the contract from $40,000 to $62,000.
Great, and that's recommendation B. Great. Mr. Rouse?
Madam Mayor, I'll move recommendation B for approval.
Great. Moved in second, we've already heard from A, so we just need B. Yes, Ms. Mario?
Would you just please explain to the public the word leakage? Or lea-
Yes. Councilman Mario, leakage is the number of passengers or the number of individuals who choose to use an airport other than Santa Barbara Airport for their travel purposes. So what we would do is to identify, not necessarily individuals by name, but the numbers, and also find out the routes they're flying to, which airports they're flying out of and where their destination, so that we can use that information to bring them back to Santa Barbara and make that case to the airlines.
Thank you. I knew that, I just was, you said it, and it didn't seem like maybe the public knew what you meant, so thank you.
Great. Okay, we have a motion and a second for recommendation B. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Great. Thank you. Okay, item number 12.
Item 12, stage-one drought update.
Okay. If it's Tuesday, we must be talking about water. Right? Mr. Hagmark?
Madam Mayor, Council members, my name is Joshua Hagmark, I'm the Acting Water Resources Manager. I'm here today to give another update on the current drought situation. I have with me today Allison Jordan, our Supervising Water Resources Conservation, and she'll be assisting me in the presentation. So to go over our presentation date, it should take about 20, 25 minutes, depending on questions. We're going, just recapping where we are, reviewing the water supply outlook, going over where we are with water purchases, taking a look at progress we've made on our capital projects related to the drought, and then update on our conservation efforts. If there's any questions as we go along, please ask. So as we've heard many times before, last year was the driest year on record at Gibraltar, and it's 94 years of records there, and at many other locations throughout the state. Because of the dryness of last year and the outlook for this year, council moves swiftly on February 11th to declare a stage-one drought. So local rainfalls currently downtown Santa Barbara has just received just shy of eight inches, which is 46% of normal. Gibraltar Dam, just over 11 inches, is 44% of normal. Kachuma Dam, just under 11 inches, 55% normal. Countywide rainfall is currently at 42% of normal. And with the recent rains, we're now up to the fifth driest year on record. So we're making progress, but it doesn't look like there's much coming. Gibraltar Reservoir is 35% of capacity, we have approximately 1,800 acre-feet in the reservoir, and I think from the last presentation I showed you, it still has a lot of suspended silts in it, so we're kind of waiting before we bring that down. Lake Kachuma is at 38% capacity with 74,000 acre-feet in it. The outlook for the next three months is below normal rainfall, so it doesn't appear there's going to be any change in the weather, and so that pretty much takes our next major rain event until, to next fall, at this point. Our current supply strategy, so I'm going to take the time to go through this, answer any questions you have, but we're currently in year three. And the, this is based on the water year, which goes from October 1st to September 31st, 30th. So we're currently in year three, and we are not projected to have a shortfall this year, but we are preparing for next year, and so we are asking the community for a voluntary reduction at this point. The shortfall next year, we need to get to that 20% reduction in usage in order to kind of make up the shortfalls in supply. We do need to purchase some water, that would be this peach color here, that's the amount of water we need to purchase, and we're currently actively pursuing that. And based on this scenario, we're not assuming any reservoir inflows and no state water, so it's a pretty, pretty conservative approach. You will also note down here, it reflects the fact that we will be taking the recycle water system offline to address the filters and bringing it online next summer in year four, and then providing part of the recycled water supply. And then you'll notice in year six, we have D-SAL as part of the water supply portfolio if nothing changes. So we also, because the question came up, what happens if we aren't able to purchase water? And so this supply strategy here has us accelerating some of our deliveries from Kachuma and bringing D-SAL on in year five. So that's basically the difference between our current strategy and this even more conservative approach. So good news on, on the demand, we have seen the messaging, I think, is helping. We have seen a decrease. We've, the green line up here is what we had projected at the very beginning of the year would be what our water demands are. This blue dotted line is where we need the community to get, to get to that 20% reduction. And we currently, and again, we don't have a lot of data points here, but with our March water usage, it looks at, folks have dropped water usage by about 15% overall, which is a great start. And so everyone should commend themselves, but then continue to look for places to also conserve. Whereas we get into these warmer months, it's going to become a lot more difficult for folks to do that. But we're headed in the right direction, and we'll continue to update this graph and bring it back as we move forward. So to kind of recap the state water project deliveries, as I've probably reported before, our state water allocation this year was reduced to 0% as a result of the dry, dry conditions even in Northern California. However, the city has been banking some of its state water in San Luis Reservoir, and we are taking that water this year. That is helping us to supplement our supplies. And there was a little bit of back and forth over the last month about whether we would actually be able to take all of our banked water, because San Luis Reservoir, DWR, was concerned they didn't actually have enough water to deliver everybody's banked water in San Luis Reservoir. So we got confirmation two weeks ago that they will be able to make good on, on the banked water that people had in the reservoir. So that is great news, and we are having that delivered. State water project deliveries, this is kind of a challenge that we're dealing with recently. USBR, which kind of manages Kachuma, is responsible for a pump station that feeds Hilton Creek, and it's an area that provides fish habitat, it's kind of a mitigation area. And unfortunately, USBR's had some difficulty with that pump station over probably the last year, year and a half. And recently, the pump station's gone down twice and has resulted in some fish kills. So USBR is going to be releasing water from Kachuma to augment water supplies, and unfortunately, when they do that, we can't make deliveries of state water from San Luis Reservoir, which has a bit of a challenge. CCWA, our Central Coast Water Authority, has come up with a very creative solution and has some piping going in that will allow us to continue pumping, and they expect that to be in place in the next two weeks. So although it's an issue, at least we got a short-term solution to keep the water moving to Kachuma. So to recap on the water purchases, as I showed before, we're looking to make up the loss of local supplies with state water, or through water purchases. Purchases to occur through the Central Coast Water Authority, and we're looking to purchase up to 4,500 acre-feet over the next 18 months. Council's already allocated $3.3 million towards those purchases. There's where they show up. There are two types of supplies we like to talk about, North Delta Water and South Delta Water. They both have different challenges. Currently, we're pursuing some North Delta Water, it's the Biggs-West Gridley, they're a water district up there, and they have some farmers who are interested in selling some of their water that they have. They have about 10,000 acre-feet available to CCWA. The price is between 550 and 615 an acre. Unfortunately, there's a lot of challenges with this water. It, obviously, they need a commitment soon because they need to plant. If they're not going to sell the water, they're going to go ahead and grow rice. And so they're looking for a commit by April 25th. The challenges with that is we're not going to know what the carriage losses are in the delta, and that's the loss of water that basically, in exchange, you basically don't get a one-for-one when you move water through the delta. There's a portion that goes towards environmental. And so we won't know what those losses are. They could be 75% of the water you move to the delta could be lost, and so that's part of the challenge of that arrangement. We also need the state approval, which we won't know until probably mid to late May, which is complicating things on that end. And currently, in the language of that contract, they're looking for, they have a term in there called "take or pay", which means that no matter what, we pay, whether we get the water or not, which is something that's been, is a challenge to kind of live with that, given the variables with this. So we have, we have some suggestions, quite a few changes to that contract, and we are hoping to hear tomorrow. If we are unable to get them to make some concessions, then we probably will be pulling out of this arrangement. There's also, I think with anything like this, there is a chance of litigation, and that's just always something that goes with it. South Delta Water currently, Vandenberg Air Force Base actually has some carryover water or banked water in San Luis Reservoir. They have let CCWA know that they have between 1,300 and 2,300 acre-feet that possibly could be for sale. They're looking for about $1,100 an acre-foot, which is a pretty decent price this time below South Delta Water. The challenge with it is it's tied up with the federal government because there really is not an incentive for them to sell it, and it's not really an easy way to transfer the water, and so that's some of the challenges we're trying to work through now is how to go about that. Needless to say, it's not enough to satisfy all the needs of CCWA, so anything could help, but this isn't, this isn't going to solve all the problems we have. We just get a small portion of this water. Probably on the minimum, 600 acre-feet is probably what we could see out of this. So to give an update on the capital projects, we're going to go through the recycled water system, groundwater projects, some update on the desal plant, and the coem pumping project. So the recycled water filtration plant bids came in on April 4th, and I wish I had better news for you, but we did receive a bid protest last week. And unlike last time, I won't make any predictions about whether we'll be able to resolve this quickly. It's unfortunate, but we'll be working through it quickly. We're still hoping to get on to the April 29th. We do have the attorney's office engaged in this, and they're helping us to work through this as quickly as possible. The protest is based on something we have seen in the past, where basically the contractor has left off a critical sub, which he could self-perform possibly, but that's what we're kind of working through at this point. The timeline for this is still anticipated completion by the summer of 2015. Cost is still around $11 million, and capacity is unchanged since last time we talked. The, since we bid the project last time, we did add some information in there to help kind of streamline, some other things to kind of streamline the construction. We also added an incentive of $1,500 a day for every day the project is completed prior to the contract completion date. And we also increased the penalties if you miss that completion date. So bids came in. The low bidder, which if it can be resolved, he's about $400,000 below what, when we bid it last time. So there is a savings if we can move forward with this bid.
We have some questions on this, Mr. Hart.
That's the question I was going to ask about the bid, so thank you for answering.
Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Hagmark, would the new recycled water plant remove any need to mix potable water?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Francisco, yes. This facility would not require the blending that's currently going on to meet, to meet water quality.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Also part of the recycle water system, I've mentioned this before, Valverde Well. It's a, basically a non-potable water source that we have, and we continue to move forward with that. We'll be doing some testing this month and to kind of figure out what the capabilities of that well are, and also to define what the water quality will be produced from that well. Our target is to have it in operation by August of 2014. And the rough cost at this point is less than $250,000, but hopefully at least significantly less than $250,000. Groundwater projects, I believe it was last two weeks ago, the contracts for on-call groundwater support were approved, and so we're moving forward. One of those tasks includes assessing and rehabilitating some of the wells in Foothill Basin to make sure we can maximize the yield out of those basins. So that's, that's in play right now. The high school well assessment, where just a reminder of that well is, was drilled, I don't know, seven or eight years ago, ended up having a lot of sulfides, which required it to be, the water being moved to the Ortega Groundwater Treatment Plant, which is like seven blocks away. And at the time, we decided just to leave it. We didn't need the water that desperately at the time. So we're reassessing that well, possibly looking at a quick connection to the recycle water system for the next year to kind of help out with water supply needs. But long-term, looking maybe to pipe it down and get it tied into the Ortega Groundwater Treatment Plant where we can treat it as potable water. We're also scoping the project for the Gibraltar silt wells. I've mentioned that before. During the last drought, three wells were drilled into the bottom of Gibraltar once it went dry, and they were, they were critical in removing another 700 acre-feet of water that was trapped in the silt and underlying gravels of Gibraltar. This time around, we're also looking to try and put these wells in and maybe a permanent application. That's something we're looking at. That's, this is actually a recent picture of Gibraltar, and so we're seeing maybe one of the benefits of having these silt wells could be like a pre-filter of Gibraltar water, which tends to pick up a lot of silt since Zachchar Fire burned most of that watershed. Alameda Well Replacement. This is a well, the city had a well in Alameda Park for many, many years, and the well has been on a decline. We are looking to re-drill a new well in the park, and so it was in our capital program to do in the next three years, to get started in the next three years. We've moved that up to lay some other capital, and so we're going to get started on this. The challenges that we're hearing right now from the consultants is, of course, all the drilling contractors are extremely busy right now, and so they're thinking it could be, it could be a longer lead time to get these wells drilled, and they're thinking 12 to 18 months to get this online. Corporation Yard Well, council awarded construction on March 25th, and right now, they anticipate it to be in production by December of 2014. Desalination Plant, all right. March 24th, preliminary design proposals were received. On April 8th, we conducted interviews and made a selection, and we're currently in negotiations now with this selected firm. The scope of the services, just briefly, they're going to be looking at what is the capacity we need prior to the drought, based on the worst drought of record prior to now. We had come up with a capacity of about 3,100 acre-feet a year. We're going to reevaluate that based on the nature of this drought and see if that's still the capacity we need. We're going to be evaluating the changes in technology since the last time the facility was built. They're going to be helping out with our permits. They're going to be assisting us with finding, financing alternatives, grants and loans that are out there, and hoping to apply for those in a timely manner. And then we're also going to be looking at different operating scenarios that, to help, to help meet demands. And then they'll also be helping out with the development of contract documents for the Design, Build, Operate. We are, we continue dialogue with Montecito Water District. They have requested to be involved in our desal recommissioning. We had two members of their, we had their board president and general manager sit in on the pre-design selection process and take part in that. They're interested in participating in the cost of the pre-designed services, so currently we're working on a, an MOU to kind of describe just their involvement in the pre-designed services. And we will continue to discuss with MWD an arrangement for a long-term participation. Permit update. The MPDS permits, we made initial contact with our regional board staff, and we're going to be doing some follow-up again, but the local staff didn't see a big issue with this, but I think the state level might have more concerns. Coastal Development Permit, I think I mentioned it last time. We had sent a letter to the Coastal Commission saying that we felt our permits are in good standing, and we are planning on moving forward. We did hear back from them late last week, and so we're still kind of working up a response, but they did note that they take issue with the work that we're going to be doing out in the ocean. And so we're going to be trying to meet with them to resolve their concerns, and some of it is a lack of information, hoping to resolve that. But we hope to have more for you guys on May 6th when we come back with the, the contract for pre-designed services for the desal facility. We'll have a little more information on that.
Are they, is the Coastal Commission claiming that our permit's not up to date? Because we're not changing anything that we were planning to do when the permit was originally issued.
There's, there's a few things. There's a differentiating of opinion on, when we described how we would operate the facility, one of the things we said is that we would operate it intermittently for droughts. And they are saying that, well, you haven't been operating it all the time, so we're questioning whether your permit is valid. And so we feel like we have some good information to kind of counter that point. But then they're also saying any work in the ocean, any work requires a permit. And so we're trying to get some clarification from them on, on that exactly what, what that entails. Is it a whole new permit for the whole facility or specific to just that element?
And this would be a permit that they would issue? Or that we, I mean, who issues the permit?
I would assume they would.
They would. And, okay, well, I know we can talk about this when you have more information, but certainly the timing on their agenda of when this happens will be pretty critical, too.
Yes, and one of the fortunate parts about the team that was selected, they do have a really strong, call them environmental planner. Basically, he worked on the Carlsbad Plant. He worked on the Huntington Beach Pilot Project down there. He's worked on West Basin. He's a lot of experience with desal permitting. He's already been in contact with the Coastal Commission on this. Tom Lester is their lead point person, and so I do hope we can at least get a clear understanding of where they stand.
Okay. Mr. Hart?
To that point, I would really encourage the city to think hard about getting coastal consultants involved in dealing with the Coastal Commission. I mean, I think this is getting to the level where, you know, it's, this is a very specialized venue, and there are people that do this, you know, every single month that know how to work that process. And, you know, from the legal standpoint as well as from the planning standpoint. And I think my experience in the past is those folks are worth the money that they cost, particularly on something as complicated as this, as specific as this. I think we have a great case to make that we have a valid permit, but I think it's not going to be easy to make that case. And I think we need to be really, from the word go, making it as effectively as we possibly can. So that would be my encouragement, is to get the right people involved in that.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we are intervening with
We are now.
Statements as well as
I started it, but yeah, go ahead.
You started, you started it.
I started it.
Okay. And obviously, this is an area where I have been concerned from the, since the, we saw this much of a drought coming for reasons and irrational reasons as well. This is a real concern of mine, and has been. I would like to see us breaking this down into a real timeline that shows what staff thinks of as the permit, whatever that process, prep process, bid process, construction process, have that kind of timeline available as we meet on this monthly. I would appreciate having that as part of what you see as your, as the, as the, as each piece, each segment of the task. I think that would be helpful. And I appreciate Mr. Hart's comments about having professionals on this, and thankfully, we have, at least we have in-house legal counsel that has both planning and coastal background. But still, I'm deeply concerned about this, and it's, the Coastal Commission is legendary in being very strong on wanting to maintain control of things, and that's, that's kind of part of the issue here, I think.
Thank you. Please continue.
All right, so here's the desalination project timeline as we know it now, and we'll be developing more information with this preliminary design study. But we are intending to go to council on May 6th, looking for an action on that contract. In September, we intend to make a presentation on the findings of preliminary design and get direction to go out with an RFP for the Design, Build, Operate in November. Looking to have a complete package ready for council in April of 2015 to be considered if water supplies continue to not improve. And that would put us in operation by summer of 2016, based on what we know right now. And so over the next few months, through the preliminary design contract, we will begin to develop a lot more information about this, and I think answer specifically the questions about the permitting process and the timeline for that. We should get a much better handle on this. So far to say, from today till when we intend to have this facility online, we have two years from today to get those permits, if that is the case, to get those permits in place, or make the strong case that this is an emergency and we need to do some mitigation or actions following the drought.
So on that timeline, in past presentations, I heard nine to 16 months as the period of time. So why is the earliest timeline for operation more than 12 months from issuing the contract, as opposed to just nine months from April 2015?
Well, it ends up, once, what I've included in there is the, the time for some design and to get that, the lead time on that. The nine months was really the construction window, and so there is some, there's some design work that needs to be done. And so there's one or two months of design to kind of at least get something going before construction starts, before they start putting in orders for equipment. And then there's about a month of testing in there. So total, it ends up being about 12 months. So tentatively, it could be April, May, somewhere in that window. And so I mean, we're, for our planning purposes, we're looking at having the supply online by the summer of 2016 as a, as a planning tool.
The $20 million price tag, most of that has to do, I would think, with the construction and not necessarily the planning.
It is a combination. The $20 million is both design and construction.
What's the, okay, so how do you break that down? What, which part is planning and which part is construction?
We have a, basically a breakdown of that. I could, I could go into more detail. I don't have that here, but I could go down to that.
I mean, I doubt it's half and half. Would you, with that, with 10 million for planning and 10
I would guess there's a million worth of design or more in that.
So then, okay, so, so as I was understanding why we were waiting until April to issue the contract was because, why spend $20 million if it's going to rain over the winter? And that makes sense to me. So we were delaying the award, even though we would have the info prior to April. However, can we divide up the planning and the, and the construction? So, you know, to quicken, so that we could go straight into construction right after the rain, should we need to? Because that would seem like, if it doesn't rain this winter, we're going to want to get that desal plant up and running as soon as possible. So why wait until spring to do the design work? When really, we want to wait till spring to decide whether or not to construct the facility? Unless for some reason, it's $15 million to do the design work, but I kind of doubt that, right? So it would be some upfront money just to do the design work that maybe we don't need because maybe it will rain in February, March of next year. But that might be money well spent so that we can get to construction, which would then make it more spring of 2016 than summer of 2016 to get things online if we need to.
Right, so the model we've chosen here, this Design, Build, Operate model, was the model that was similar to what was used last time for the desal facility and is the quickest way for us to get the facility up and running with, I think, also buffering the liability of the city. So basically, these teams are going to be teams that have built desal facilities in other places around the world and have teamed up on stuff. We will be selecting them based on the best proposal, and we'll be putting that proposal out in November. We should be receiving answers to that proposal sometime in February, and that team will be made up of both designers and contractors that were going to be going after this work. And so they can quickly start, what, part of it is the design, they can be designing a lot of the stuff onsite as they're ordering and doing, because the long lead type items is the filters. So the design could quickly go in. We know exactly what kind of filters we want to spec for that because during this preliminary design phase, we will be laying out exactly what type of filters we're going to be looking for. We'll be laying, this pre-designed work will literally lay the framework for what these Design, Build, Operate contractors will be working under. And so I do feel that this is still the fastest way to get there. Breaking it out and having a separate design contract would not
Well, then maybe I need more detailed information of what happens between November 2014 and summer 2016 in terms of cost and mileage. 2014 and summer 2016, in terms of cost and milestones and timing. Because if I heard that nine months was the soonest you can get something online, once you start construction, that's not nine months I'm seeing here. That's more than a year. So, I'm missing some information here. That seems to me that, you know, I need some more education in order to make this timeline mesh with me.
And when, when we come back in May, we can give you another explanation. But just to kind of elaborate, the construction, we're not just going to award a construction contract like we typically do. In fact, I don't think the council has ever seen a design, build project like what's being proposed. Because what happens is, we're hiring a contractor, and we say, okay, here's the major parameters, what you're going to do. And then they're going to do the design, and then they're going to build it, all as one contract. Because that's faster than us doing a detailed design, and then hiring a contractor than to just build it. And the other benefit of this is, is that this is a performance-based contract. So when it's all done, this contractor is, you know, part of it is, is they have to deliver the water. And so, by doing a design, build contract, we're already speeding it up. And so, but we're not breaking out, okay, the design is that, because we're doing a little preliminary work, and then they're going to bid on this. But it's going to be totally different than a typical construction bid, where they're just going to build it. And they're going to then have to bring in their consultants and do the final design. Meanwhile, ordering the, ordering the equipment at the same time as they're doing that. And that gets you the faster. That's why we're choosing this approach. Now, you're right. I think, you know, there may be a way to speed it up a little bit, and when you award it in April, to pick up a couple months or so. But, but the design, build process itself is an accelerated process.
Okay. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, a couple things on that front. One is, what we've been, we've talked about a bit, and now, and this starts to gel in my mind, my, perhaps what I'm trying to get across, is, at the top of that list is permitting. And not only is it the coastal development permit, but there would need to be building permits as well for the work, right?
Right.
So, that's just, that's the start. That's, that's the first phase there. And I want to see that as part of our timeline going forward. And I expect that with the, even with design, build, there's, there, the companies are going to be willing to, as long as they're getting paid, for their efforts fairly, to be gambling with us through this speculative process of, of contingency planning, as long as at the end of their, of, you know, okay, it's raining, we're, we're stopping this process, and here's your million dollars, or whatever it is that you get for hitting those milestones, without spending the $20 million for the actual capital, you know, for jumping over the cliff. But we've, we've saved that time, we've been, we've been going down the pathway, which we're all talking about here. But I would appreciate seeing, as I say, that line one is permitting, and it's both coastal development permit and building permit. It's just as a way for us to see, another benchmark for us to be able to watch you as you're, as you're going through these efforts and getting letters from the Coastal Commission like we fear we might get from the Coastal Commission. But I think what it'd be, it's important that we're all watching this thing go forward. And with the design bill, that we have in that, some contingency capability, that everybody knows we could pull, we hope we get to pull the plug on it, if it doesn't happen, because it's raining, that everybody knows that we're going to do it, and it's going to be fair to all concerned. So, that's at least, maybe that gets across a sense. And I know that's a, a piece of everybody's thinking here. But I think we can make that clearer in the, in these, in these planning sessions, which I really appreciate that we're on this, and that I'm sure takes a lot of effort to get, get this together. But obviously, it is our most critical issue now.
Mr. Hatryus?
Mr. Armstrong, at what point do we get funding options for this?
We'll be running, parallel to this whole process, we'll be running another process to figure out how we raise the money, and what the impact would be on, and how we finance it, then.
And there will be choices, correct?
Yeah, they're fairly limited. And in, in the end, we're probably going to have to, if, if we award that contract, we're going to then have to have the financing in place. And that's either we're going to borrow it, or, you know, I mean, in a perfect world, we could get a grant, and we'll seek every grant opportunity. But if we're unable to get grants, then it would be some form of loan, either through the state, or we'd have to sell bonds.
But it's not going to be reserves, correct, or not?
Um, I think you're going to probably be drawing down reserves in the water fund just to cover the expenses we've already talked about, so.
So it's, it's loans, but to be paid back by the ratepayers. So that's why we have to be so careful. Right. Mr. Hart?
Well, I just want to kind of follow up on Councilmember White's point. I do understand what you're talking about, design, build. And traditionally, the reason why those projects, why we haven't done that work, is because of the permits required from, and in this instance, the most difficult permit of all, I think, is the Coastal Commission permit. So we're, you know, we, until we have that permit, you're not going to find a contractor that's going to do a design, build project, because they don't know what they have to build. And they can't put, they can't put themselves at risk in that process. So, I think it rolls back to my earlier point, which is, you know, right away, we need the best coastal consultant people involved in this, to get some kind of resolution as fast as possible regarding the permit issue, so we know what we're going to do, ask people to build. That's, that's our problem. And I get it, this is super dynamic, this is extremely difficult. I really appreciate, you know, the real-time information. This is, it's very hard for us, though, because you guys are scrambling to get us information. We get relatively short staff reports. We get a good PowerPoint presentation with, with a lot of rich information in it. But I think you're sensing, you know, kind of edgy frustration, that we don't feel like we're up to speed with the details on this enough to really contribute to this. And that's, you know, it just is the reality of it, is, I mean, I think Councilmember White, you know, saying that what we want is a contract that gets us to go really fast, that protects us from risk, that a contractor would absorb that risk, and then say, oh, I guess we don't need to do it after all because it rained. That'd be great. I just don't think that's going to happen. I don't think, I don't see how. We are going to have serious risk involved in this process, whether it rains or not. And, and we just, the more information that we can have, you know, as fast as you possibly can get it, even getting us this PowerPoint, if it was done on Friday, it would be helpful to me to have this, you know, before today. So, just, but I know you're still not even done with your presentation, so I'm sorry.
Why don't we let you finish your presentation?
Madam Mayor, Council Hart, this, this scope of the services that we're talking about is exactly that. It's going to dive into these permits and really vet what we need to do, and lay out the plan for it, so that when we do go out to a design, build contractor, it, it clearly lays out what they need to do, because we've already had all those discussions and meetings. So that's, that's the intent of this. Now, again, as you know, it's a, it's a very, it could be very challenging working with the Coastal Commission, but I feel like we put together a team to kind of move along with that. I think your suggestions are right, dead on. We, we could bring in definitely some more support to, to help out that team. And we can definitely have more of a discussion on this on May 6th when we come back, as, as we, we vet that. One of the things that we're looking to do on May 6th, too, is talk about having a, a council subcommittee, recommending that we have a council subcommittee to, to help as we work through some of these, these issues related to D-SAL, so we can move quickly with some of those items.
Okay. Go ahead.
All right. Combe Pumping Project, the bids did come in April 4th. They were about approximately what we thought, $3.8 million for the capital, and to operate this facility for five months. Then it's going to be about $125,000 a month after that to operate, or $70,000 to, to stay on standby. And the facility is currently moving forward to be online by September 1st. The pumping capacity will be about 45 MGD, and the city's portion of that initial $3.8 million is about $1.3 million. So, Stage 2 drought timeline, we are currently preparing to declare a Stage 2 in late May. We've targeted May 20th. And so, we're moving forward. We feel like all the triggers are kind of lining up, that we need to take it to that next step. Water supply situation is not improving. We have not yet secured any water for next year to purchase. We're not quite to the 20% reduction we need to get to. And with the reduction we have seen, there's obviously concern that our revenues are not going to meet our expenditures. We need to stay neutral on this. And so, all kind of points to moving towards the, the Stage 2. We'll be going about, in our next presentation over the rates, we'll be reviewing the financial impacts and talking more about that. So, in summary, the Stage 2 drought will have drought-based water rates, the, continue the message of extraordinary conservation, and will be modify our drought-based water use regulations. And that'll be, we're going to the ordinance committee on May 13th. But we did receive some feedback yesterday from the Water Commission. I'm sorry, we're going to the ordinance committee on the 29th, and then introducing that ordinance targeted for May 13th. So, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Allison Jordan.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm going to give an update on our conservation workload. Two areas I'm going to address is the updating the water conservation model, and then our increased water conservation program activities. As we discussed last month, we have our water conservation model that was developed as part of the long-term water supply plan update. And we had intended to update this model prior to the drought, and coincidentally, we're in the, you know, midst of preparing for that. And so, we accelerated that based on the comments from council last month, as well as the intention of wanting to get the model with the latest data. And so, we ran two scenarios in the model this last month. It's very preliminary, because we accelerated this quite quickly. But we have two scenarios. One, we looked at the long-term water conservation program updated, which would run from 2014 to 2040, which is the new urban water management plan, planning period. And then the second scenario is for, basically, this next year, looking at, you know, the short-term, one year, what would happen if we just maxed everything out. For the long-term conservation program, we assumed similar water conservation program measures that we currently have slightly, you know, updated. But we also added in the advanced metering infrastructure. That is going to be part of the business case that we are going to be developing based on council approval today. I think that was on consent. So it assumes similar staff and marketing levels. It incorporates historical data back from 1998. The current, the original model had data from 2009 and back, and so we updated that with data from 2010 to 2013. And it's the, as I mentioned, the similar model to the one that we did as part of the long-term water supply plan. The drought conservation program, we looked at one year from now, with the goal of increasing funding and increasing savings. We assumed, just really as a preliminary assumption, to get this information to you today, what if we doubled basically everything? So both doubling all of the rebate amounts, as well as the market penetrat-, market penetration. So, assuming that it would double the amount of participation, as well as double the amount that we're offering. And we, again, included the same historical data, and it's basically a sister model to the long-term conservation program model. So the results from the updated long-term conservation program are similar to the costs that we have now, in addition to adding in the advanced metering infrastructure, brings it around $700,000. Our long-term conservation program is around $600,000 a year currently. That's both program and staff. But actually, during the drought right now, we're up to about that $700,000. It showed a annual water savings of 139 acre-feet per year, with, at the end of the planning period, around a 2,000 acre-feet per year. And for reference, our current program, that's been adopted by council to the 2030 planning period, would be ending in 2030 with about 1,300 acre-feet per year savings. So one thing to remember with this is that the, the savings are cumulative, and they're per year. So the difference is with purchasing water, or something like that, it's one set amount of water. With conservation, you're getting it every year, and so it adds up, and that what, is what makes it so cost-effective. And the projections for them, this is, again, very preliminary, but as I mentioned, we did this doubling both of the penetration and of the costs. It came out to about $2.2 million with the one-year savings of the, by our own, 273 acre-feet per year. So, if there aren't any questions specifically on the model right now, I can move on to our conservation program updates. And we've been very busy. As you can see, from the 15% reduction this last month, we're really thankful to our city water customers. We've been getting a lot of input and feedback, a lot of participation. We have accelerated our marketing messaging and outreach. We have a very increased drought media campaign. Hopefully, you're all seeing it. We're going print, radio, TV, just really trying to just, you know, get the message blasted out there all over the media. That's one thing we're doing. Secondly, is we're doing a lot of weekly messaging. We're really fortunate that we have such an infrastructure through the city with our, our City News and Brief, that City Administrator Office sends out every week, all of the different tools that, we have Twitter, and Facebook, and the city's website. And so, we've just really maxed that out. The City Administrator's Office is helping us a lot with that. We also are taking advantage of our relationships within the community and the industry. Over the long haul of our city's conservation program, we've really developed some really great relationships with the California Landscape Contractors Association, with the Restaurant and Lodging Association, the Association of Realtors, and it just goes on and on, you know, DO. I mean, everybody is really participating, and we're using that to expand our message. So a lot of e-newsletters, we broadcast a message, and then it's repopulated into other industry and community newsletters and outreach mechanisms. And we're doing a lot of presentations. We, originally, when this started, I had the idea of pitching a speakers bureau, you know, sending out, hey, we're available. Well, we didn't have to do that. Everyone came to us. So we were probably averaging, between all of us, you know, around at least five to six presentations a week. I'm actually presenting to the Association of Realtors, a special presentation that they wanted just tomorrow. And they have over 60 of their members attending. So we've, lots of examples of that. And then we've done a lot of additional printed and signage. We are putting signage in a lot of city facilities, you may have seen that, out in the parks and at Los Banyos, and, you know, the list goes on. One thing that we're taking advantage of also is the power of our utility bill messaging. So we have the ability now to print on the bill a targeted message, both for the different types of water users, as well as the classification. So for example, we can have a separate message for our recycled water users, which as you can imagine, is very powerful right now. Another message for irrigation customers, another one for single-family. So, we're, we're using that, because that is one of our best ways is to reach our customers, is through the printed message on the bill. We have a lot of workshops that we're working with the different industry partners with. One is, we have a Landscape Water Use Drought Forum. It's going to be for landscape contractors, property managers, HOAs. All of our South Coast water providers are partnering together on this. And it's going to be a morning session, really focusing on all of those three areas that affect landscape water use. Property managers, landscapers, and the water providers, having a discussion about, you know, what are the things that are working, and what can we work together on to getting even more savings out of our landscape water use. The California Landscape Contractors Association is partnering with us. We have a water manager certification program that they do, and we're holding a training here in Santa Barbara on May 7th. It's, this is one of the best things that a landscape contractor, gardener can do, because it teaches them how to manage a landscape to a water budget, which I know you all are familiar with, is how our irrigation rates are set up to a water budget, which is based on the plant's water needs as the weather changes. And this is the ability for landscape contractors to see the water usage, to know what's happening on the property in relationship to water. And we have really driven our message through our water checkups, and we've seen a huge increase. We're 43% more than this time last year. And we've hired additional staff to assist us with that. We're trying to keep our schedules so that we're no more than three weeks booked out. We're about two weeks right now, so that's good. That's, you know, ideally, we don't want people to wait a long time. So, but yeah, we're up to, we did 221 water checkups in the last three months. It's quite a bit. We are working as a city family to really push as much water conservation as we can get out of all of our city facilities. I think, you know, we've had a city facilities water conservation program for 25 years, where we've looked at city facilities infrastructure. And we're fortunate, we have that base. And we have, you know, the, we've had council adopt a city facilities water conservation- And we have, you know, we've had council adopt a city facilities water conservation policy. We have, you know, the latest and greatest of plumbing fixtures in our city facilities. So what we have done is met, we have an intercity drought team, and we brainstormed on extraordinary water conservation measures. So this is really going above and beyond. And we came up with a list of five measures that are in progress and eight measures that we felt like were like, just do it now. We also have another list of items that need more resources of evaluation. So the five measures, an example of those in progress are reducing reservoir cleaning and reducing fire hydrant flushing. The just do-its are reducing irrigation as much as possible, reducing vehicle washing, and turning off decorative fountains. All of our departments have just really stepped up and have done a great job. The Parks and Recreation Department is currently developing a drought action plan. They're taking to the Parks Commission in June. They have really taken a proactive role, and they are assessing which areas in parks will need to be irrigated for active recreation and which areas that they can either really stress or let go as far as irrigating. Another example is the waterfront department. We about six months ago did one of our Waterwise surveys for them through our Waterwise Survey Incentive Program. They are implementing all of our recommendations and very quickly. So, and there's much more examples of, you know, city facilities, but I just wanted to highlight those two. And just as a reminder to those that are watching, we have a great website, the city's website, as well as the regional website, which is waterwisessb.org. We are happy to come out and assist at businesses and residences, and anyone that would like to talk with us or set up a water checkup can call 564-5460.
I don't see any speaker slips. Any other comments from council on this, and then we can get on to the water rates. Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So as I look at the council agenda report and the 20% target, which clearly is a little bit less than what we got years ago, but that's because we've managed as a community to save a lot more water, so that next increment of savings is going to be harder and harder to achieve, I'd assume. And the target, of course, is to save water rather than buy it or develop it. But the Stage 2 is anticipated almost as a fatal complaint. We can't, can we conserve enough water to put that off? Or is it because of the Prop 218 requirements and the timeline, are we pretty much headed down that pipe no matter what?
Councilmember Rouse, obviously, there's a lot that goes into it. You just kind of named a few of them, but, you know, keeping our water budget revenue neutral is part of it as well as that kind of drop-off in usage. Unfortunately, that's a big part of our revenue, and so kind of rebalancing it is part of what we're heightening the concern with the Stage 2, but also looking at the rates to kind of keep the budget in balance. That'll be the discussion next. Yeah.
Mr. Hart?
Just a couple of points. When you described the complications involved in getting that North Delta water, I was intimidated because I think that sounds like a really hard thing to pull the trigger on when you don't know how much water you're going to get, you have to pay for it whether you get it or not, you don't know what the state regulatory environment is, there's potential litigation. I just, I don't understand how you could even do that. And I appreciate that you're working it through every step and hoping that something's going to break, but that seems very difficult. The better option sounded as though, you know, seeking congressional approval to get Vandenberg to sell its, as amazing as that sounds, that that would be easier. I think we should be pursuing that, you know, with our Congresswoman and state senators, our US senators as fast as possible because I think there's a potentially reliable partner there. I imagine what that truly means is sharing that water with all of the other water districts, so it's not a ton of water for us. And then the last thought I had, because I've had some conversations with other people, is, you know, the approach of updating our wells and getting that work done is also, I think, going to get really problematic. I hear that there's a multi-year delay in getting well-digging companies to do wells because everybody wants wells at the same time. So we may have to cast a much, much wider net than we would have imagined originally. You know, I don't know how far your RFPs go physically, geographically. You're probably going to have to look states away potentially to get a well-digging company that might be able to come here. And that kind of becomes crazy if you're just doing one well, so you probably have to do something cooperatively as well with the other water districts that might be trying to do the same thing. And I don't know how, why that net needs to be cast as well, but this is really becoming challenging for you. I totally appreciate that.
Mr. Hachkis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've been asked and didn't know the answer, and I'm not sure to who I should address this question, but what kind of evaporation do we experience at something like Lake Kachuma? In other words, what loss do we get with evaporation?
Councilmember Hachkis, the evaporation is actually really significant. It's approximately 9,000 acre-feet of water evaporates from Kachuma, and if you figure the city uses about 14,000 acre-feet, it's a pretty significant chunk of water.
So it's more than 50% then?
Of our water usage, yes. Yeah, and, you know, that's taken into the supply at Kachuma, that's taken into what's actually available. The current plan with Kachuma is we're looking at a 40, being able to take about 40% of our normal allocation, and that was reflected in the strategies we currently have. We're expecting that. And that'll take Kachuma down to about 20,000 acre-feet by next, by next October, September, October, and which will leave a very little left in the reservoir after that, and enough to probably get us a little bit into the next winter. So we've got two more winters to get something to start filling that reservoir back up.
So it just needs to rain. See? Just like that. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would ask that staff provide, me at least, a copy of that coastal staff letter. Appreciate seeing that.
Okay, so that, we don't need to motion on that. That was just an update, so, but we do have an action item on the next item. If you can read item number 13.
Item 13, Stage 2 Drought Water Rates.
Who's taking this one?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Kelly Dyer. I'm the Water Supply Analyst for the city, and I am here to discuss drought water rates. In Joshua's presentation on the drought update, you can see we are facing a serious situation. It's not yet in an emergency, but we are taking it very seriously, and we're counting on our community to band together and reduce their water use by 20% overall. And at the same time, we're facing increased drought-related costs, particularly on imported water and groundwater supplies. And so we have gone through a study to update our water rate model and evaluate the financial impacts of the drought and develop drought-based water rates. So this is just a brief outline. I'm going to talk about our projected water supply and demand. Our drought expenses and financial plan, walk through the proposed rates, and then we'll be requesting council action. So you've already seen this chart today, so I won't go through the details, but we are currently in year three, and looking ahead to year four, we're projecting serious water shortage of about 20%. And we're working very hard to look for water purchases to help reduce the level of shortage, but there is a lot of uncertainty in whether that water will actually be delivered. And so we are assuming a 20% shortage for next year. This is assuming no reservoir inflows and no state water, which is what happened this year, so it would be a repeat of next year. This is a chart of what our demands look like under normal conditions. Across the bottom, we have our different customer classes, and the colors of the bars represent the tiers. We have a tiered rate structure. So as you can see on the chart, on the far left, that is our single-family residential demand. That represents about half of our overall water demand. And then the green and the red bars are the, is the water use in Tier 2 and Tier 3, and about half of our water use is in Tier 2 and Tier 3, which is considered outdoor discretionary water use. So that's the demand that we're targeting when we're asking for a 20% reduction. We want the Tier 2 and Tier 3 demands to go down. And this chart is what we would anticipate our demands to look like with a 20% reduction. So significant reductions in single-family residential Tier 3. And another thing to note here on all of our irrigation meters, we have three different classes. We've got residential and commercial, and then we've got parks, recs, and schools, and the third is agriculture. We're assuming no water will be used outside of their monthly irrigation budgets. And just to provide some background on those budgets, they are a function of weather and also irrigated area. And for residential and commercial, I'm sorry, for residential customers, it assumes only 20% of the irrigated area would be turf, grass. And for commercial customers, it's none of the irrigated area would be grass. So I just wanted to give you some background on that. That's what's used to go into the monthly budgets for Tier 1. This is a look at our financial plan before the drought. And so looking at FY '14 and going to FY '15, let me just back up a second and describe this chart. The blue bar across the bottom is the operating expenses. The purple bar is our debt service, and the red bar is our capital program costs. And so between this year and going to FY '15, the green bar is the, or the green line represents the gradual increases over time that we would have for our rates, and it was a normal 3% increase is what we would have had for FY '15. And we've gone through the analysis of looking at our financial plan, taking into account the drought. And let me first start to talk about the costs. We saw about $4 million increase in operating costs for FY '15 due to imported, projected expenses for imported purchases. And on the capital costs, there were additional capital costs related to groundwater projects that were accelerated. It was about $4 million. But we went through and looked for projects, planned projects next year that could be deferred and completed at a later time, and so that there is no net increase in the capital expenses for next year. The red line shows our revenues under our current rates. And so for FY '15, with a 20% reduction in demand, our revenues would not cover our operating and our debt service costs. And so we're looking at with the proposed rates, which is the green line, a 7% increase for FY '15 compared to FY '14 overall. One thing to note also is our total cost of service for FY '15 is greater than the revenues generated from rates. The total bar is higher than the green line where our revenues cross, which means that we're planning to use money from reserves for FY '15 expenses, and it's about $8 million that we'd be using from reserves. This chart shows the reserve balance. The orange bar is the ending balance, and the red line is the council policy target for reserves. And so by the end of FY '15, we would be slightly below the council policy by about Wanted to add this slide. This is a debt coverage fund, just so you're aware that it exists. It has a current balance of $5 million. This is a separate fund from our reserves, and it's intended for meeting debt service requirements for unforeseen circumstances. It formerly was called the Rate Stabilization Fund, but we've renamed it to better match the intention of the fund. Before I go into the proposed water rates, I wanted to talk about the approach. We just completed a comprehensive rate study in 2013 that looked at our tier allotments, and a lot of thought went into the rate structure. And we already have a, we're fortunate, we have a rate structure that incentivizes conservation already. And so what we're, what we did in the drought rate study is build on what we already have and further incentivize extraordinary conservation with the steeper-inclining rates, and also assessing the financial impacts of the drought. The drought rate design, we, last month, we talked with Water Commission and received a lot of input on the design of the water rates, and the general themes that have been carried forward are to minimize the impacts to the lower water users. The largest impacts would be to the higher water users, and we've reduced the single-family residential Tier 2 allotment by two units. And the, in order to evaluate and determine the rates, there is a requirement, Prop 18 requires a cost of service analysis, so all of the water rates have to, for each of the customer classes, has to match the cost of service. And that is where Raftalis Consultants I have, Sudhir Pariwala is here with me today from Raftalis, who updated the rate model and performed this cost of service analysis.
Excuse me if I might go back to that last slide. When you say reduce the single-family residential Tier 2 allotment, so that would push them into Tier 3 sooner?
Yes, and so we looked at our 2013 comprehensive rate study, and an analysis was done on the sizing of the Tier 2 allotment, and it was determined that 1,600 cubic feet would be appropriate for the average single-family residential customer with the average lot size. And at the time, we've added an additional two HCF buffer to their allotment, and so now that we're in a drought, we're just removing that buffer.
That's an annual figure?
Monthly.
Monthly, thank you.
Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Dyer, so if Prop 218 requires that the cost, that the fees reflect the cost of service, how do you at the same time have a progressive rate structure?
Sudhir, do you want to take that question?
Good afternoon, if you can state your name for the record, too.
Sure. Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Sudhir Pariwala with Raftalis Financial Consultants. So when we are doing this cost of service analysis, one of the issues that we face is how do we execute the question that you ask? How do we go about setting rates that are consistent with cost of service? And there have been several cases in the recent, real recent cases, Pajaro Valley Water Management Case, which kind of gives us good guidance in terms of how we go about setting these rates. So when we're looking at, our basic purpose is to identify the costs associated with each customer class, and then within that class, as long as we are collecting the revenues that we have identified that need to be collected from each class, we have some flexibility in terms of setting rates to meet our objectives, which in this case is to promote conservation. So we go about, as indicated by, from the commission objectives, minimize the impacts on the low-volume customers, have the highest impacts on the large-volume customers, and reduce the Tier 2 impacts. Based on that guidance, we have been, we have come up with a rate structure that meets the overall revenue requirements for each class.
So this is based on a court decision?
The, well, that's, we have used that court decision to, Prop 218 by itself is kind of vague in terms of, you know, how we go about setting rates. So there have been several court decision challenges and so forth. The most recent court decision, it's an appellate court decision, so we have used that as one of the mechanisms to help us identify the best way of setting rates.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, and here are the proposed rates. I'll just walk through these one by one. The single-family residential, multifamily residential, and commercial and industrial rates are shown on this slide. And for the Tier 1 allotment, there would be a 3% increase. That's the normal 3% increase we would have done under non-drought conditions. The Tier 2 allotment for single-family residential reduced from 1,400 cubic feet down to 1,200 cubic feet, so reduced by two. And the Tier 2 pricing changed from $5.16 to $6.39. That's a 24% increase. And Tier 3 increased from $6.62 to $13.44. So that's more than doubling. And so multifamily residential follows the same increases for Tier 1, 2, and 3. And then commercial and industrial Tier 1 is a 3% increase. Tier 2 is going from $5.91 to $11.61. It's a 96% increase. For our irrigation meters, the single-family, or, sorry, the residential and commercial irrigation meters, Tier 1 would see a 24% increase from $5.16 to $6.39. Tier 2, this irrigation rates for residential and commercial is really an extension of what we saw for the single-family Tier 2. And so it matches the 24% increase and the 103% increase from the previous slide. For irrigation of parks and rec and agriculture, it's 3% increase in Tier 1, and then Tier 2 are both increasing by 103%, going from $6.62 up to $13.44. And for recycled water, it's going from $2.16 to $2.24. And the recycled water rate is based on 80% of the irrigation rate for parks and rec, which is part of our agreements with our recycled water customers. For customers outside of the city, there's no change in the percentage. They are charged 130% of the inside-city rates. That's based on the cost differential to serve those parts of our service areas, which are somewhere up in the hills and require a lot of infrastructure to get up to them. And we did check that the revenues recovered from outside-city customers matches the cost Are there any questions on the rates?
Mr. Hotchkiss.
Yes, I have a question. I don't know if it's possible to answer this, but if there's a median single-family residence, which would probably have maybe, certainly the first two tiers and maybe a third tier in it also, what is their increased cost liable to be monthly? Is that possible to answer that?
Great question. I'm glad you asked that.
Oh, my God. I can't believe you said that. I didn't see, you didn't set me up on this either.
So this shows this customer impacts for single-family residential customers. And so for low water usage of four units, for 100 cubic feet per month, they would see a change of 40 cents in their monthly bill, 3% increase. For moderate water usage of about 1,200 cubic feet, they would see an increase of $10.24 on their monthly bill. That's a 19% increase. And for the high-water users, we would, they would expect to see a difference of $127 on their monthly bill, and it's a 72% increase. That's for the volumetric charges. And then we also have fixed meter charges, their monthly, on the bill. Those fixed monthly meter charges are going up by 3% to 4%, the standard increase. So that, you know, the total water bill would be the sum of the meter charge plus the volumetric charge.
And when, if we approve this today, when would this go into effect?
These rates would become effective on bills beginning July 1, which, because they're monthly, they reflect monthly water usage, it would actually start with water usage as early as June 1.
I understand, thank you.
And just to be clear, we're not asking you to approve the rates today. What we're asking you to do is allow us to send out the Prop 218 notices to all the residents, and then we will have an actual hearing in, I think it's early June. In fact, the schedule's probably up there.
Right.
Where you would actually formally approve the rates. And you would have the ability to lower the rates but not raise the rates at that point. You can only go one way.
Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Star, there's been some concern about people that have analog versus digital meters and the conversion, about which meter moves faster, which meter moves slower, people of accuracy in water meters. Where are we in the city? And maybe this is a question for Mr. Hagmark. In terms of that, in, so a lot of customers are now obviously scrutinizing their usage. And oftentimes, I think the experience is when you go to digital from analog, that the meter spins faster because it's more accurate. Am I correct in that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, we actually aren't going to a digital meter. It is still a mechanical meter. We are going to be replacing them over the next five years. So really, the portion that people might see if their meter is replaced is basically because their old meter was very inaccurate. And then that's what we've kind of seen with some of those old meters. As they, typically as a meter ages, it doesn't spin faster, it spins slower.
That's how.
And so when a meter is replaced, it's just reading their actual water usage when that happens.
Well, that's what I meant. I was hoping that we wouldn't create two tiers of citizen out there that, because I know you guys get complaints, I hear about water meter indiscretions, discrepancies all the time, so.
You know, if someone has a question or concern about that, they can call in, and we'll certainly do a service check on it, and we can bench test their meter and check their accuracy.
Thank you. Then my second question, Ms. Dyer, is, so as we set these new rates, and part of the rates are actual cost of production of water, some of the rates are going to be in capital and infrastructure. And this is a stage 2 drought condition, so once stage 2 is no longer in effect, do we go through the re-noticing process again? Or, Mr. Armstrong, can you actually lower rate? If we decide to roll back, can we roll back? Are these designed as the future?
Whenever the drought condition changes, whether it improves or worsens, we will have to reassess our financial plan and reevaluate water rates. If there's any increases in the water rates, we, that's when the Prop 218 noticing is required. I don't know that we can go back to what we had before, because we'll have to assess all the costs that we're incurring due to the drought.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get a handle on for the general public who's asking right now. So you're declaring a stage 2 drought. When the stage 2 drought is no longer in effect, do we go back to the old rates? And that's a rather complicated question.
No, the declaration of stage 2 really makes the regulations on water use restrictions enforceable, but it's sort of, the declaration of stage 2 doesn't necessarily institute the water rates, if that makes sense.
Right, just we're doing it at the same time, but yeah.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And just to hit the one biggest point about rates going forward is, if we can avoid a desal plant, then we have a real potential to lower rates back from these accelerated rates that we're seeing now. That's the one big piece out there that if we can conserve enough water now and get us through this without the desal plant, then we do have some ability to pull back rates. But otherwise, it's going to be higher. It's going to be substantially higher than this. And that might be something even for us to talk about in the future, is what, what kind of blue-sky ballpark numbers we're talking about, because maybe that'll help us conserve a little more for this next 18 months.
As we were modifying and updating the rate model, we added a placeholder to evaluate the cost of desal and the impact on water rates. And I do want to mention, since we're talking about how long these rates will be in effect, we are facing a lot of dynamic conditions, and there is uncertainty going forward for next year. We don't know how long the drought is going to continue. Right now, our financial projections assume it only lasts for one more year. If it lasts longer than that, we'd have to add in the cost of desal. So these, this financial plan that we talked about today currently does not have the cost of desal factored in. That's something we'd have to look at. And so we may be revisiting these rates with, you know, in a matter of mid-year. We, you know, I doubt this will be a full year before we reevaluate and reassess our financial situation. The other thing I wanted to mention is that this is all based on a rate model. We do our best to, with the information that we have available, but these are projections for what we think our revenues will be. And it's predictions versus behaviors. We don't really know how people are going to change their water use exactly. And so we're going to have to monitor this very closely and reassess as needed.
Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to go back to something Mr. Hagmark said, that if I got my meter switched out today from an old one to a new one, what might I see in increased usage, in increased usage? I mean, that could be a shock right there, so above and beyond any rate increase.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, there's a wide range when we tested meters. They could be as far off as 20%, some of them, but we're going through and replacing some, getting them replaced to, obviously, it actually reads what your actual water usage is. We are testing some of the meters that we're pulling, so that we get a really good idea of how inaccurate some of those older meters were. But this is a process that's, you know, we're not going to be hitting a lot of properties in general. If we're going to be doing this over five years, it's really spread out. But it's certainly something that we've been under-registering. There's a good chunk of the city that we've been under-registering on.
Do we warn people about this?
We do, yes. We have, definitely have a PR machine that goes out and lets people know before their meters after it's been done. We let them know if they have any questions. We have a number for them to call and get all their questions answered, so.
Because there are some people that this could really push to the wall, even though it's only maybe $50 or $100. If you're on a really strict budget, you know, it's a, it's a bad deal.
I mean, I think the highlight is they've been getting a, getting a good deal leading up to this, so.
Say it again.
They've been getting a good deal leading up to this, if their meters.
Yeah, unfortunately, they're not going to see it that way, but thank you.
Is that a glass half-full? No, sorry. Okay, please continue. We're almost done.
So I wanted to walk through the public process. In March was when we went to Water Commission to look for input on the rate design. March 25th is when City Council authorized the contract to do the drought rate study. Yesterday, we presented the proposed rates to Water Commission, and they recommended council action to send the rate notices. And today, we're here to present the proposed rates. April 24th is when we would mail out the Prop 218 notice. And that begins the 45-day process between when the rate notices are mailed and the June 10th council rate hearing. A week after the rate hearing, council would consider adoption of the rates, and then they would become effective on bills beginning on July 1 and applying to water usage as early as June 1. So we are requesting council action to set the public hearing date for June 10 and direct staff to send notices to customers informing them of proposed changes to water rates.
Thank you. Why don't we go to public comment? Mr. Walker.
Forgot what I was going to talk about. It's a very long presentation. Excellent. I just want to embellish Councilman Hart's statements about well drilling. I brought this up before Kachuma Operations and Maintenance. I happened to catch a quote by a major well drilling proprietor over in the Central Valley. I caught it about a month ago. And he said, discussing the well situation for a major grower that would be in a state of losing multimillion dollars worth of crops, money was no object. He said, "Give me one well, give me four wells, give me nine wells, I don't care. I've got too much to lose." And that's what you're up against with the well drilling situation today. The skill levels of crews are, take time to develop, and there's a shortage of good well drilling crews now, and parts are almost unattainable, so it's a very serious thing, situation that will impact rates, too. The one other thing I wanted to say is, you know, thinking back to the, I call it the '84 to '91 drought, I never saw a comprehensive economic study of what really happened. I'm sure it was a cost-negative totality of, you know, outcome, but, you know, maybe we can partner, the city can partner with UCSB and really look at what the costs will be involved with rates and the consequences thereof. Thank you.
That concludes public comment. I don't have any other speaker slips. Great. Ms. Murillo.
Did I see correctly that the out-of-city water customers, there'll be no change for them? They already pay 130%?
They already pay 130% of the in-city rates. So the increases that they will see are reflected on the, I don't want to say there's no change to their water bill, because the in-city rates are going to be changing, but the proportional cost, the 130%, is remaining the same.
Oh, okay. So if they end up using a lot of water, they'll be paying in a higher Tier 2?
Correct.
Okay, just the way it looked, it looked like, you know, we were going to leave them out of it. Is this the time to make a comment?
Yep, we are ready and.
Deliberating?
Yep.
Well, I'm ready to support the recommendations, and just sitting here, so uncomfortable. I don't like the rates going up, I don't like the drought, you know, what do you do? And I do feel responsible as someone, you know, elected up here to make the correct decision. So I just wanted my residents out there to know that, you know, we kind of have to do this. What I'm also hearing from what you were saying is that if we go down the desal path, that it'll cost our residents. And so I'm thinking very seriously about going down that path. And sometimes I hear from Councilmember Hart and Councilmember White, you know, that the desal plant, it will really help us, and I know it's a Plan B, and it'll rescue us if we're really in a bad place. I just want to go on record saying that I'm uncomfortable enabling a Montecito lifestyle of using water on lawns. And so that's another thing that's in my decision-making process. But we're considering all kinds of things. But for today, I'm okay with going with this. And I guess I'll just go ahead and move the recommendations, A, B, and C, to set a public hearing on June 10, and to direct staff to send a notice of a public hearing to our customers, informing them about these changes.
There's a second? Moved and seconded. Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of comments about this very excellent staff report, and I appreciate that we're moving, this isn't moving fast enough for me, but it's, but it definitely got accelerated from its previous track, and I appreciate all the work and effort that's going into this to try and catch up with the curve. Also, I think that our finances, we're seeing a use of reserves, we're seeing that the system is solvent, and that we're able to take these hits and move on in a strong way. So I feel good about that. I think that at least it's showing a prudent system, showing the results of a system prudently managed. Deferring the capital programs, the pipe replacement program, for example, is something that is appropriate at this time. And so, again, those are the pieces that I feel are the results of many years of strong management. And one area where I did want to say to address Ms. Murillo's concern is that a fundamental I did want to say to address Ms. Murillo's concern is that a fundamental piece of this is keeping the lifeline at an affordable level. And so that's getting through the 3 percent hit. Yes, it's getting that. But it's at least, that is, that's a policy decision that's being made, that Tier One, and I don't think that the forecast that's put in here gives quite enough credit to that, what's going to happen in the savings of Tier One. I think we're going to see some savings. It'll be interesting to see whether, as we look back, it uses half the water, right? Isn't that what the quantity? So I think we're going to see some savings in there, even though those aren't budgeted into this system. So I think people will be able to cut back their lifeline, even the apartment buildings. And I think we'll be able to see that, analyze that a bit. As Mr. Walker was saying, we can look back on this and see how we did. Finally, if we don't hit our financial numbers, we do have some free board in our meter charge. And I know that, again, that would be a cost to lifeline folks. But we, as I understand it, we have the ability to raise our meter charge by as much as 50 percent. So I'm not saying, in increments, up to a total of 50 percent, if we needed to, in order to hit our financial targets. We wouldn't need to do all the Prop 218 noticing to do this. But as part of our adaptive management, as we're going forward, we do need to keep this system continuing to be financially solvent. And so I know that we'll be getting that feedback as we're going along. And I think it's important that we not lose sight of maintaining a prudent financial system, as well as a prudent resource system. And of course, I'll be supporting the motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Hart?
I just, I want to echo other comments. I think that the way that this is structured is that it's going to be very expensive to water, overwater outdoors primarily. And it's going to, the first thing that is the most water consumptive is turf. So I think people are speaking directly to Councilmember Murillo's point, that, you know, the first place people are going to cut back is watering their lawns. And that's, they're going to pay a very significant financial penalty to try and continue to do business as usual. And that, you know, that's just the reality of where we are. The thought occurs to me about, to ask the question about gray water. What is it that we do in terms of regulating that? Is that an option, a viable option, for people to take the water out of their washing machines and put that outdoors? What is the process involved in doing that with permits and things?
Speak to the one who wrote the regulation, right?
Right person to answer the question.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, the state of California updated the gray water regulations several years back. And so throughout all of California, laundry-to-landscape gray water systems, which is taking the clothes washer water, is, does not require a permit now. There are conditions, in particular, that, the main condition is that it must be used subsurface for health and safety reasons. So there are certain conditions on the use of it. But we have a lot of information on our website. We have a really great DVD that's available at the library, as well as we have copies to give people for free. There's a lot of support. And there's also several local community organizations that have developed workshops on installing laundry-to-landscape gray water systems. We provide that information on our website, and we actually partner with those organizations and help fund those workshops and training. So there's a lot of great information and kind of hands-on assistance for people with gray water.
Well, good. I'm glad to give you the chance for that plug. And I think you're going to have a lot of customers looking at you for that information. Thank you.
This makes a lot of sense in terms of the timing. And I think part of the messaging about going into Stage Two is, these rates are going to go up, and that's without D cell. And people who water, do a lot of irrigation and landscaping are going to see their rates go up. And I think the message going back saying, you know, you feel this now, just wait. You know, if we need to do D cell, that's going to be even more expensive. And that in and of itself could be another incentive to reduce their water usage, because, as you talked about before, the conservation piece to this makes a big difference in terms of stretching out the supply that we have. So how that messaging comes out, I think, will be really helpful. I had a constituent email me with a great suggestion about why can't they show on their water bill what was, what they did this month compared to this time last year? And my bill, I said, well, we do. And then she scanned her bill to me, and I forwarded it to Ms. Bjork, and hers didn't. So I don't know why that was the case. So maybe that's something in our billing system that she said, here's a great idea, you know, like you should see it with energy use, you see it with other. But for whatever reason, her water bill, I'll send it to you. And I don't know if that's a common thing out there, but certainly looking at your past experience is going to help you in your future planning. And so that might be something, just to check our billing system, to make sure everyone has that capacity. And I'll send you this particular person's scanned bill, so you can see what I'm talking about. So, okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you. I appreciate the 8:05 patience. I think we need to take a little stretch. So if we could take about a five-minute or so break, that would be great. Thank you.
If you could please take your seats, so we can get.
I think they have the votes this time.
Okay, I'm going to call the council meeting back to order. If we could read item number 14.
Item 14, Appeal of Fire and Police Commission's Decision to Suspend 805 Roadside Towing from the participation in the Police Department's Tow Rotation List.
Okay, this is an appeal. And actually, I'm going to turn it to Mr. Cullon for some initial comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is an unusual kind of appeal. And I wanted to take a minute to give you the rules of the road, so to speak, for it. It's unusual because unlike most of your land use hearings, the appellant in front of you has a property right. They're not seeking a property right. They have a property right in their place on the tow rotation list. And the city is trying to take that property right away. Therefore, some special due process rules apply. First among those is that the city will bear the burden of proving to you that the facts justify removing this permit. The applicant, or rather, the appellant doesn't bear that burden, the city does. And the Police Department will attempt to carry that burden. Secondly, the actual burden of persuasion is that you have to find, by a preponderance of evidence, that the facts justifying revocation of the permit exist. Preponderance of the evidence means just enough evidence to make the fact more likely than not. So as you weigh and balance what you hear and see today, you're looking for a scale that tips slightly in favor of proving the existence of the fact. Doesn't have to be 90 percent, doesn't have to be clear and convincing, just a preponderance of the evidence. Secondly, or thirdly, the kinds of evidence you can rely upon are the sorts of evidence that responsible persons are accustomed to using in the conduct of serious business affairs. That's not quite a court standard, but it's more stringent than what you normally face. The kinds of evidence that responsible persons are accustomed to relying upon in the conduct of serious business affairs. So.
Is that not, might it also be said, common sense?
Common sense goes into the mix, but it means that the statements that come into you tonight need to be weighed against that fairly stringent standard, that it's evidence serious enough that people in the conduct of their business affairs would rely upon it. So a naked allegation of something may not stand. You might ask for documentary evidence. For example, tonight, I know that one of the issues will be a measurement about the size of a towing yard. You'll need to feel comfortable that the police have shown, by a preponderance of the evidence, that the towing yard is or is not a certain size.
But the burden of proof remains with the city, correct?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Finally, this is the kind of hearing where written findings are strongly advisable. There are none in your packet. So at the end of the hearing, I'm almost certain to advise you to direct me to prepare findings that are consistent with the decision you want to reach. With that, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. So just for everyone else, the way this will work, we'll have a presentation by staff. I know there are a number of commissioners here as well. They'll be available to speak and answer questions at that point. Then the appellant will be able to have up to 20 minutes, is that right? Yes, 20 minutes of time. You don't have to use that whole time, but you're welcome to. Since the city is also the applicant in this case, won't go back to you for another 20 minutes. You'll just have your presentation at the beginning. They'll go to public comment at that point. And then, at the end, if the appellant has any time left over from their 20 minutes that they'd like to use at the end, after public comment, for any final comments, they're welcome to do so. And then it comes to council for deliberation. Okay? So with that, we will go to our Police Department.
Madam Mayor and council, I'm Captain Wydham with the Santa Barbara Police Department. I run the Patrol Division. With me today, I have Officer J.C. Hunter, who's our Traffic Investigator, and also our Tow Compliance Officer, and three members of our Fire and Police Commission. I have Jennifer Christian, John Terrell, and Barney Maleklian. I'm going to start with just some background as to how we got here with the tow rotation and the requested, the suspension of 805 from the list. In May of 2012, the Fire and Police Commission recommended that, at their normal meeting, that there was an update of the tow rules and regulations. I believe that the last time they had been updated was 2003. So it was a time to take a look at the regulations and rules that govern our tow rotation. And that started the process. In August of 2013, the revised tow rules and regulations were approved by the Fire and Police Commission. Initially, I started that process after the May 2012 Fire and Police Commission meeting. I took apart of that. And then what I did is I had Officer J.C. Hunter complete that as our Tow Compliance Officer. He worked with the Fire and Police Commission. He worked with the tow companies to come up with the final document that was, in August 2013, was revised and approved by the Fire and Police Commission. On October 8th of 2013, the tow rules and regulations were then approved by City Council. And Officer J.C. Hunter is now the department's designated Tow Compliance Officer. Typically, that position falls in line with the Traffic Investigator. We did have a previous Traffic Investigator, and J.C. Hunter had taken that spot about a year and a half ago. Each of the seven tow operators on the Santa Barbara Police Department Tow Rotation received a copy of the revised rules and regulations. And when I talk in terms of the Fire and Police Commission, this would also cover the seven companies that rotate through our Fire Department, as well as the Police Department. Officer Hunter completed a tow compliance inspection as for the rules and regulations, and submitted a report to Santa Barbara Police Department staff on January 22nd, 2014. The report indicated that at that time, there were five companies in compliance. Those companies were Love's, Smitty's, Thomas, Holgers, and Santa Barbara Towing. Two companies were not in compliance, and that was Nieves Towing and 805 Roadside Towing. The Fire and Police Commission, at their annual tow meeting held on January 23rd, 2014, they held their annual tow meeting, and the non-compliant companies at that time were given until the next Fire and Police Commission meeting to come into compliance. And when Officer Hunter, in that meantime, had conducted re-inspections of both Nieves and 805 Towing. Nieves Towing, at that time, was found to be in compliance. And 805 Roadside Towing was deficient in two areas. At the February 27th, 2014 Fire and Police Commission meeting, a recommendation from staff was to suspend 805 roadside towing from the Police Department and the Fire Department rotation until they came into compliance with the deficient areas of rules and regulations. The areas of non-compliance included two areas. Failures possess a city business permit for a minimum period of three years per Section 2C. This was a new rule that was implemented by the Fire and Police Commission. Previous to this, the old rules had it at six months. In other words, the business permit needed to be held for six months for a new company coming in, or for a company that was on the rotation of the Police and Fire Rotation List. The owner-operator of 805 Roadside Towing, Mr. Boucher's argument to the Fire and Police Commission was that he believed that he was grandfathered in to remain on the Santa Barbara Police Department rotation. And while that was up for discussion during many of the meetings, ultimately, when the Fire and Police Department ruled, it was ultimately rejected. So the final document for the rules and regulations did not include a grandfathering clause. 805 Roadside then became ineligible per Section 2C in August of 2014, until August of 2014. Section 2F was failure to maintain a vehicle storage lot with a minimum storage space of 20,000 square feet. This is not a new rule. This is a rule that's been in effect for some time. And 805 Towing maintains two storage lots. The initial inspection showed that 805 was 1,322 square feet short of minimum. And 805 attempted to reconfigure their lot utilizing driveways as storage areas. Officer Hunter re-inspected the 805 lot with more accurate measuring devices and found the actual shortage was 1,766 square feet short of the minimum required by the rules and regulations. Based on those two rules and regulations that we believe 805 is not in compliance, the staff's recommendation is that 805 Roadside be suspended from the Santa Barbara Police Department and the Santa Barbara Fire Department towing rotation until such time as they come into full compliance with the rules and regulations.
Thank you. We have questions. I actually have two questions. I'll start. Why three years? What is the magic, what's the magic rationale behind being, having a city permit for three years as opposed to two years, or a year and a half, or four years? Why three? What was that? What's the rationale behind that?
That was actually the number that all of the tow operators had reached consensus on when they came up with the final set of regulations. So that was really a recommendation of all of the tow operators, including 805.
Okay, but why?
Well, I mean, I can imagine it would speak to experience. And this isn't just operating a tow company in the city of Santa Barbara. One of the main issues for me, because I was also part of the subcommittee that worked on redrafting the rules, is these operators are on the rotation list that is representing your law enforcement departments, your fire and your police departments. And so they're out there, basically, in line with those safety departments. So, I mean, to answer the basic question, I think experience, in this area, you're talking about evidence tow's, you're talking about significant accidents, you're talking about a whole host of things where these operators are out there, representing not just the city, but your city law enforcement departments.
Okay. So that explains things for me, moving from this point forward. But the issue here has to do with grandfathering in. The 805 Towing basically has four more months before they hit their three years, according to the report I just heard. What would be the expectation of what you would see that would make things different than they are today in terms of accepting them into the tow rotation?
This is not the only issue that they're out of compliance in, which is why I think we suspended rather than removed them from the list. So they are taking up a seventh spot, which another operator can't take while they're working through these two issues, the lot space, and then the term of operation. And you asked, what would be different about them? The fact is that I think this goes to a more fundamental issue, and at least it did for me as a commissioner. And that was, first of all, the issue of consensus. These are the rules that the operators ultimately came together with and agreed that these were workable for them. And second of all, it seems unfair or inequitable to treat different, to treat some operators one way and some operators another. And that's why, at the end of the day, this is the set of rules that everyone agreed to. We reviewed them. We, you know, approved them. And that way, everyone, every operator exists, you know, that's on the list now or in the future, can go to this document and see what are the rules that they're supposed to abide by. And so it really is, it's an issue of fundamental fairness to all the operators.
Okay. And then my last question is similar thought process about the 20,000 square feet. Why that number as opposed to 15,000 or 25,000? What makes that number fit?
In fact, that was not really a change to the rules. That's an In fact, that was not really a change to the rules. That's an old rule that's been carried over. That figure has been the same. But I think it has to do with the requisite space that's needed when they're doing a whole host of tow's, including what winds up happening is they have to go out and tow larger vehicles, disabled vehicles, abandoned vehicles. And it speaks not to just what they're able to do on behalf of the city, but when they're towing these vehicles, maintaining what the departments for the city need, and protecting the property of the citizens that they're, you know, maintaining while whatever needs to be done is done. And sometimes, those, like on an evidence tow, for instance, you might need to hold on to that vehicle at the lot for a very long time. And there was an instance, in fact, it was very unfortunate. It was a death. It was a car accident that caused the death, and the evidence tow, that tow needed to be maintained, and it was accidentally destroyed. It doesn't really pertain to this appeal today, but the idea is that it seems like a simple thing, what these tow operators are doing as part of the rotation and on behalf of the city. But there's a lot more to it, both in terms of them representing the city, and them caring for the property of the citizens.
Commissioner Terrell?
Madam Mayor, excuse me. Would you ask each of the speakers to identify their names and affiliation?
Thank you. Yes, I was, you read my mind, so.
My apologies. I'm Jennifer Christensen, and I'm currently the chair for the Fire and Police Commission.
Thank you. And then Commissioner Terrell.
I'm John Terrell.
Make sure the green light has to be on. There you go.
Here we go. I'm currently on the commission, and my name is John Terrell. I'm retired from the county. Just to answer your questions from a different perspective, we upgraded these towing regulations for two reasons. One, to make it more consistent with other towing. The city has their own towing regulations. The county has a different set, and the Highway Patrol has a third set. So we have three different sets of regulations these tow operators have to follow. And we thought, that doesn't make, you know, a lot of sense. You don't have different versions of the Ten Commandments based upon what state you're living in. It's all the same. So we thought we'd upgrade these things. So at the end, like the three years, we probably got that from the other regulations. I don't know. But that's beside the point. So we tried to upgrade the towing regulations for consistency, at least to get them as consistent as possible with the other jurisdictions. And then, secondly, to enhance public safety considerations. And so I think we achieved both of those, those objectives. But all throughout our discussions, which we're going about over about a year or so, we were having these discussions and forming these regulations, all throughout the discussions, I think it was made clear in our committee, that we were not going to write these rules in any way, shape, or form that would eliminate people from the list. In other words, we could have written these things in such a way as to knock six out of the seven people off, and we had our favorite person remain on the list. It's like when you're working in purchasing, you write the RFP in such a way that only one person can respond to it. We didn't want to do that. So we said, whatever the rules that change, whatever changes we make in the rules, nobody's going to be grandfathered in, but we're not going to write the rules in such a way that people would be eliminated because of changes in the rules. So for me, and, you know, we can go get those tapes from those meetings, and we can play those tapes, and you'll see, over and over, it was said, "We're not writing these regulations in a way to eliminate people from the list." So that's my first thing. The second thing is, these negotiations with the tow operators were going on for almost a year. And it was a process, a thoughtful process, and in a, you know, if you're going to get to what the lawyers call a legislative intent of these regulations, you more or less had to be there for these discussions. Two members of our commission are new. They just came on recently, and they were not here throughout any of this process. If those two commissioners had recused themselves from this vote, the decision would have gone the other way. Because two out of the three people who went through these discussions, went through these negotiations, voted not to suspend 805. So that's my speech. So make of it what you will.
And just for the record, you voted against removing the, you were in the minority vote. It was a 3-2 vote, and you were in the minority of that vote. But Ms. Christensen, you were in the majority. Is that correct?
Right. I wouldn't have been in the minority had everybody, you know, had they been there for the three discussions.
Just to be clear. Mr. Hotchkiss? Questions at this point? Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Had 805 performed poorly?
I can answer that. Madam Mayor and Councilman Hotchkiss, no. Of the seven companies that we have on our tow rotation, there are no complaints from the police department regarding service to us or the city.
Okay, so to your point, then, it's not really valid to say that you were worried about their representation of the police force to the public because they were doing a good job, correct?
Actually, no. I would stand by what I said, which is, I have a concern that all of the operators operate safely at all times. And at an even higher level than perhaps, because they are representing the fire department and the police department. And what is underlying the purpose for those two is, like the evidence tow that I said. So I wasn't trying, there was no specific intent to address a safety issue with 805. The issue that actually was documented through some of the minutes, actually was from the August 2012 meeting of the subcommittee, apparently, with the operators, included a discussion about the tow operators meeting amongst themselves to review and approve the changes and come to consensus. And if they did not do that, then Commissioner Terrell and I, who we were, we actually made up the subcommittee, we were both on the subcommittee, would then get involved again with those operators. And the history of that is actually, then there was a meeting with Detective Hunter and all of the operators, where apparently, they went through line by line. But Detective Hunter should probably tell you about that process. It was compelling, though, at our meeting, when we finally, when I think it might have been me that made the motion to approve the staff recommendation to suspend 805. And three of the commissioners did vote that way, which is why we're here today. Part of the testimony was that all of the operators were at this meeting with Detective Hunter, who is now in charge of ensuring compliance or reviewing the operators for compliance with the rules. Line by line, they went through each of the proposed, the regs, all of the regs with all of the changes. And Mr. Boucher, the operator of 805, was there and participated, and did not raise this as an issue at the time. So these rules, it was not something that we came up with or imposed upon him. He was an active participant in this. And part of the problem that you get, and it's also documented in these August 2012 minutes, my concern is that you have a set of regulations that are very clear on their face, that make it very clear what the rules are. And if you start to, or if I was not comfortable moving away from those stated rules and having some kind of inequitable application of these tow rules, applying some rules to some operators, and then relieving some operators of the requirement that I'm imposing on other operators. It was inconsistent application.
So you're telling me that he approved rules that mistakenly excluded him?
Apparently.
So if he, if.
Knowing full well, though, that these rules would not apply to him.
Or believing full well, I understand.
See, that I would disagree, sorry, respectfully, I would disagree with that.
I don't want to debate between two commissioners on here, so.
Okay. So it wasn't for a lack of good performance that we're citing this company. It's simply that we changed the rules, and then they fit in the past, and they don't fit in the present. Is that correct?
That's.
Yes or no?
I was gonna say, that seems correct.
Okay.
That's correct. What I said was correct.
Yes, that they.
In the past, they qualified, and in the present, with a change of rules, they don't.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Captain Wytham, could we step back a little bit, because I'm not familiar, and perhaps other council members aren't familiar, with how the police department and the fire department use tow service? Could you talk about that a little bit?
Certainly. Primarily, the police department utilizes the tow service. On occasion, the fire department does. When we utilize them, it could be for a stranded motorist who just requests a tow, and that would be one case. But typically, what would be is when we take some type of enforcement action that would require towing of a vehicle, if we, someone is driving without a license or unlicensed, suspended license, or they're arrested, typically, we will tow their vehicle and store it. And a storage is different from an impound. A storage is, we're taking their vehicle and storing it for them while there's some other issue. Say they're in jail. When they come out of jail, then they can retrieve their car. If we impound it, an impound of a car means we need it for some reason. It has some evidentiary value, and we will, and it's not free for them to pick up until we give authorization for its release. So, kind of a simplistic terms, that's where we utilize mostly our tow rotation. There are seven companies on that. It's, we do tow quite a few cars, and those seven companies, it'll be one after the other, based on our dispatch tow rotation.
And that leads to my next question, was how often do you utilize this service, would you say?
Very often. I would say probably one an hour. One, sometimes two, one within two hours. Just depends on the activity that the officers have. And, you know, at the middle of the night, there might not be as many, but during the day, we could have five, six, or seven tow's. We might go through the whole rotation twice in a day.
Okay. My next question is, so the Fire and Police Commission came up with this set of rules, and undoubtedly, they did that because of a need that the police department and the fire department expressed. Could you talk about what it is, what's behind the rules? What are you trying to achieve with these rules?
Well, we were active participants in creating the rules, or I shouldn't say creating, but updating them, making sure that they're in compliance with all the vehicle and penal code regulations. Which, in that effort, one of the issues that came up was, how long should a tow company have a business license within the city before they come in our tow rotation? The police department's stance on that was relatively neutral. And this was an item that the Fire and Police Commission, as you've heard, is very passionate among fire and police, about how long someone should be, have a business permit and work within the city before they can be on the city's tow rotation. From the police department's perspective, we didn't particularly take an active role in that time period. It wasn't a very large issue with us. It was within the Fire and Police Commission.
And could you elaborate a little bit about what it is, what is the police department trying to achieve that determined which rules you created for what purpose?
Well, what we're trying to achieve is stay within the law, make sure that they're in compliance, and that when we have a tow company that's a part of our tow rotation, they represent the police department. And we need to make sure that they're safe, they operate within the law, and they operate within good faith of, you know, what the police department and the fire department's standards are. So, you know, they're an extension of us. When we entrust them with a vehicle that was in our custody, and now that they're being towed, impounded, and stored, and then the person has to come and get it released, it's technically, it's our tow. And we want to make sure that those on the tow compliance list or on our rotation fall within the good work practices that we demand.
Okay, thank you. That makes it a little clearer. And one last question, a minor point. So of these seven companies, one of the other companies that was found to be out of compliance with the new set of regulations was Nieves'.
Yes.
What were they out of compliance with, and what did they come into compliance?
They were out of compliance with the same one we're discussing here, which was the three-year rule. But however it was found, there's nothing in the regulations that states they have to be three consecutive years. And Nieves' Towing had three years previously to this time, so they had a cumulative three years plus. So they did come into compliance.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question, whether it's to our attorney, or, well, perhaps it starts with the regulations themselves. Do the regulations state that you need to be for three years, and that that starts right away? I'm comparing this to my experience, which is more with land use, where there's lots of legal nonconformity that occurs. So I'm wondering about trying to differentiate this regulation that says, gotta be three years, and here's a tow operator who hasn't been there three years, and he just agreed to disqualify himself by supporting this thing, which is obviously an odd set of permissions that, obviously, Mr. Hotchkiss was kind of exploring as well. So I'm looking for that differentiation here between, or how it compares to land use situations where you change the setback, but somebody's got a house there that's closer to the setback, and the house is still allowed to be there. Doesn't have to tear down the house and move it back. So is there, how do we differentiate or compare those two regulations, would be my question?
I think the regulations for a tow operator can be more fluid than they can be for land use. There is a 235-year tradition of protecting real property rights in this country, and we've done that through having non-conforming uses when the rules change. We don't have that similar tradition for towing. So here, the council doesn't have a legal mandate to protect existing tow uses. They can be subject to new regulations. The question you do have is an interpretive one, and that is whether the regulations should be interpreted to provide for a grandparenting opportunity.
Mr. Hart.
Following along, Councilmember Francisco's questions. Captain Wytham, just help me understand how the rotation works. So a situation develops, you call the first company on the list, they respond. The next situation, you go to the next company on the list, and you literally, as you described, go through that oftentimes twice in the day. What happens if one of the companies is full? Their 20,000 square feet of area is, there's no room at the storage yard. They would just volunteer that to the person that's calling them and say, "Sorry, we can't help you right now," or even that there are too many trucks or doing too many different things. They just go to the next person on the list?
Well, Councilmember Hart, they would have to let us know that that fact exists. In other words, that they can't, they have no more storage space. There are towing situations that only certain companies can handle, like semi-trucks. And occasionally, we have an issue with a semi-truck in the city, and currently, I don't believe all of the companies can handle a semi-truck.
Okay.
So they would then defer to another company. I don't recall that situation happening, but yes, it would be, hopefully, they would say, "We can't handle any more cars," or they'd have in excess of the 20,000 square feet, and they would have additional auxiliary space they could store somewhere else. But, you know, just in terms of the tow rotation, it does work sequentially exactly like that, number one through seven, then it goes back up to one through seven, and it's all computer-generated in the system in our dispatch center.
Well, thank you. That's exactly what I was looking for. Thanks.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not sure I was following correctly, but the requirement, we've been talking about Section 2C, but Section 2F with the square footage, was that consistent from before and now? That was the same square footage?
Councilmember Rouse, yes. 2F is consistent with the rules as they were prior to the rules and regulations that were implemented six months ago.
Okay. And on your slides, you mentioned that Officer Hunter had measured the subject property twice.
Yes.
With slightly different numbers, but the other number was worse than the first measurement. And do we have anything along the lines of how that was documented, or graphs, or pictures that are here for this hearing today?
I would have to defer to Officer Hunter and his methodology, if you'd elaborate. I want to go to the counter there.
Please state your name for the record, too. Thank you.
Officer J.C. Hunter. The first compliance check, each tow company is given a form where they're to list their square footage. And so when I arrived at 805, he had listed for his two storage yards 10,000 square feet. 10,000, 10,000 equals 20. My focus with 805, as well as the other tow companies at that point in time, was to verify their numbers in an efficient manner. So I used a tool called a Rolatape, which is a device that has a wheel, that has little feet that stick out that click the counter. The Rolatape only gives me to the nearest foot. So in between the clicks could be six inches. So what I did to benefit all the tow operators, and all I was doing at this point in time was simply verifying the numbers that they were telling me were true and accurate, I would roll the Rolatape up to the edge of the property line, and then if I didn't hear that the little foot. that the little foot clicked the counter, I'd roll it up a little bit up the fence until I heard it click, again to the benefit of the tow operator. So, in using what I termed in one of my reports, this liberal measuring methodology, even using that, I found that 805 for the yard on Mason Street was about 1,300 square feet short of the measurement. When this came into issue and 805 requested a re-measure, I then went with a much more meticulous measuring method of taking a fiberglass, a 300-foot tape, measuring tape, and I took another officer with me, and we held it at one end of the property line, I held it at the other end, and then got the more accurate measurement. So, my focus from the first measuring to the second measuring was a little bit different because I was, the first time, just validating what they were telling me versus now ensuring that I had hyper-accurate measurements. And that's the basic reason for the difference in the square footage analysis.
Thank you. And I would then ask the commissioners in your deliberations, because we once again focused on 2C. Clearly, 2F was part of the deliberations as well in your decision?
Yes, it was. And in fact, Officer Hunter had done a very thorough, detailed report, including the process that he just described in terms of actually measuring it out. That was certainly part of the information we received and part of the deliberation. And it was definitely one of the items that I found compelling in terms of determining whether 805 was in compliance or not with the rules.
Should we say?
Yeah, I just want to add to that. When I first came on the commission, I think I was on the commission when 805 was admitted to the list. And the reason 805 was admitted to the list is the Police Department and the staff recommended they be admitted to the list because they met all the requirements, including the storage yard area. My understanding was originally, the driveway was counted as part of the square footage and after this happened, the driveway was not counted. So, you know, I don't get that, but that's the story on that, to my understanding.
Thank you. And the last question to Captain Wytham, or just remind me, under the regulations, the ones that are currently on the list, are they on indefinitely? Is there a review period? Do you reauthorize the permit? What's the timeline for being on the rotation list?
Madam Mayor, we have, yearly, we have tow inspections, but we, there are seven spots on the list and over the years, it's gone from four to seven and that's completely a Fire and Police Commission decision whether they want to add to the list additional spaces. But once they're on the list, as long as they stay in compliance, they stay on the list.
You, on an annual basis, then reaffirm that they fit all the criteria?
That's correct.
So, that's the only way they could be taken off the list unless they choose to be, unless they resign from the list?
That's correct. We had about a year and a half ago, one of the tow companies, local tow companies, that was on the list for many years, went out of business and that opened up a space.
And nothing's precluding you to go to eight or nine or 10 spots on the list?
No, it would be a decision of the Fire and Police Commission by vote if they wanted to do that, that would be fine.
Okay, thank you. All right, those are our questions. Thank you very much. So, to 805 towing, you have up to 20 minutes. If we ask questions of you, that doesn't count towards your 20 minutes, just so you know. Okay? So, if you could state your name, and you can see a little counter there on the podium so you can see how much time you have left. Great. So, if you can state your name for the record and go right ahead.
Okay. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name's Aaron Boucher and I own and operate 805 Roadside Towing here in Santa Barbara. A lot of this information will be reiterated from the information they've already given you, but that's how I've prepared my speech. I've lived here in Santa Barbara for 11 years, started my towing business approximately two and a half years ago. I'm a single father of a seven-year-old boy and the course of bringing my business where it is today has not been easy. I submitted my original application for inclusion on the city tow rotation list in February of 2012. At such time, among many other stringent requirements, that pertaining to length of time in business for applicants read as follows. Any operator shall be eligible for inclusion on the list if he or she has had a valid business license issued by the City of Santa Barbara for at least six months prior to application for inclusion. On July 5, 2012, a final inspection of my facilities was conducted by Santa Barbara City staff members, Officer Hunt and Police Technician Holly Perea. It was determined by them that all requirements were met and 805 roadside towing was added to the city tow rotation list immediately. Shortly after my company was added to the city tow rotation list, an item was placed on agenda with the Fire and Police Commission to examine the existing rules and regulations for tow operators on the city's tow rotation list. It was a fact that they had not been reviewed since 2003 and there was interest in updating for safety, legal adherence, public satisfaction, and the quality of service. It was decided by the board that the tow operators should participate in the process of updating the rules and regulations and most of the operators were present during the several meetings that were held to discuss the changes. A subcommittee was appointed to facilitate the process and included Commissioner John Terrell and Commissioner Jen Christensen. I was present at every meeting, volunteered time to facilitate and organize future meetings, and even drafted recommended changes to the rules and regulations. I was as proactive as I could be in the construction of the new document. Throughout the process, I had concern that I may be affected by a major change to the rules and regulations, but I was comforted by comments made by Commissioner Terrell that reaffirmed his position on the implementation of any new rules. During the Fire and Police Commission meeting, March 28, 2013, a tow operator identified that the two newest additions to the tow rotation list do not qualify according to the new rules and regulations. That would be me, my company, 805 Roadside Towing, and Nieves Towing. Commissioner Terrell rebutted, "All of the companies had been approved and placed on the list by the commission and he does not want to throw people off the list because of a new rule change." Commissioner Terrell followed with the statement, "They would just not use the term grandfathered In September 2013, City Council voted to approve a document that was the culmination of many hours of input from the tow operators, city staff, and the board members, especially those representing the subcommittee. It was decided that the new rules and regulations would be effective January 1, 2014. In a memorandum dated January 23, 2014, given to me by Captain Wytham of the Santa Barbara Police Department, I was made aware that my company was no longer in compliance with the rules and regulations. Most importantly, my company did not meet the following. Failure to comply with minimum storage space requirement per section 2F of the Santa Barbara Tow Rotation List and Rules and Regulations, which states, "Operators on the list shall have at minimum 20,000 square feet of storage space available." We have addressed and are able to correct the storage requirement immediately. The next, pursuant to Santa Barbara Municipal Code, Section 5.30.020, "All operators shall have had a valid business license and tow operator permit issued by the City of Santa Barbara for a period of at least three years prior to application for inclusion." The municipal code uses the verbiage, "prior to application for inclusion." Though there was discussion within the Fire and Police Commission meetings about an annual application process, it was ultimately decided that the tow operators need not engage in an annual application or renewal process. Rather, the tow compliance officer would inspect the tow companies each year for compliance with the rules and regulations. My company has been on the Santa Barbara Police Department rotation for nearly two years and nothing in the new code states that the three-year requirement should be applied retroactively. I did not apply for inclusion on the list in January of 2014 because no such application process is necessary for existing companies according to the municipal code. At the annual tow operator meeting, which was held with the Fire and Police Commission, February 27, 2014, the Santa Barbara Police Department made a recommendation to suspend my company, 805 Roadside Towing, from the city's tow rotation list due to noncompliance with the rules and regulations. This recommendation was upheld three to two. With due respect to all the board members, it should be mentioned that two of three votes made to uphold the Police Department's recommendation were made by board members who joined the Fire and Police Commission as of January 2014. During the February 27, 2014 Fire and Police Commission meeting, there was discussion as to why or why not my company should be affected by the new rules and regulations. In brief, and I will be quoting minutes from that meeting, Captain Wytham stated, "This is not a reflection of the service that the seven companies have provided to the department and that all seven companies provide good service. This action is simply because of the new rules and regulations and the department has no issue whatsoever with the service provided by any of the companies on the list." Commissioner Terrell stated, "He is struggling with the idea that the only reason 805 doesn't meet the requirements is because the commissioners changed the rules." He remembered that the commissioners didn't want to eliminate people. He said, "The reason to change the rules was primarily because of public safety and good service concerns and they didn't want to automatically eliminate people because of the rules." Commissioner Terrell said, "He didn't think the three-year license requirement was in effect when 805 was placed on the list and he doesn't understand how it was okay to put them on the list in the first place. And now, because the commissioners changed the rules, all of a sudden, because of a technicality, 805 doesn't meet the requirements and he is struggling with this." Captain Wytham stated, "The three-year business license is the only new rule." Captain Wytham stated that the three-year rule was not that big a deal to the department. Commissioner Terrell stated that regarding the three-year license, his understanding always was that the commissioners would not make a new rule that would toss somebody off the list and this rule would be in effect as people dropped out and new people were considered to replace them, they would have to have the three years. I'm here today to appeal the decision made by the Santa Barbara Police, Fire and Police Commission to suspend my company from the Santa Barbara City Tow Rotation List. While I realize the code in question is a civil ordinance and not a criminal law, it parallels an ex post facto law. The retroactive application of new ordinance or laws is illegal in most criminal cases and is disfavored in civil cases. The retroactive application of this ordinance is punitive as it's applied to my company who was in compliance with existing city rules and regulations at the time it was approved to participate on the city's tow rotation list. An example, similar to the one you gave, if City Council were to make a change to an ordinance in regards to planning and zoning and implemented a requirement that any new dwelling must be constructed on a 20,000-square-foot parcel, would they also require existing dwellings built on a 10,000-square-foot parcel to be demolished? Upholding this new requirement is punitive in an economic sense since it deprives my company of the ability to share in towing opportunities. This denial of towing opportunities negatively impacts my company, my employees, and most importantly, their families. Furthermore, it will cause financial detriment that may be cause for my company to cease operation altogether. Though my company is allowed to continue operating, it has been denied the right to participate with other tow operators in towing services that are generated by agencies of the City of Santa Barbara. It seems unorthodox that my company has not afforded equal protection of the law by being excluded from grandfathered protection. If my company had been the subject of service or safety-related concerns or complaints, I might be able to understand this draconian action, but we have a clean record of service. I respectfully ask the mayor and city council to review and reconsider the construction and application of the rules and regulations pertaining to tow operators on the city's tow rotation list so as to restore the right for towing companies who are in compliance with city requirements prior to the enactment of this section, as long as they correct any deficiencies within a reasonable period of time. I believe it was never the intent for the approval and implementation of the new rules and regulations by you, the city council, to put any company out of business. Please consider, my business is my livelihood and I refuse to give up on success. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have some questions from here. I'm going to stop the clock here, so we'll start with Ms. Murillo.
So, one of the things that caught my ear was that the three years doesn't have to be consecutive. So, you don't have that in your history, though?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm ready to deliberate, but I'll be quiet until other people ask questions.
We still have public comment too, so.
Oh, just public comment.
Right. Mr. Francisco.
Mr. Boucher, you mentioned that you could correct the storage requirement immediately. Would you talk about that a little bit?
Yes. When my storage yards were originally documented by me and passed along to the Police Department, I believe the verbiage in the rules and regulations reads, "Must have 20,000 square feet of space available." It doesn't say storage space, it doesn't say space to store vehicles, it doesn't say how the space must be configured. I simply looked at a parcel map, I got the square footage from the parcel map, deducted the space of the building that's on the property, and deducted that I have 10,000 square feet at one and 10,000 at the other. I didn't go out with the hyper-accurate measurements that Officer Hunter did because I simply don't have the expertise or the tools to do so. So, I was relying on county and city public information. To answer your question, yes, I do. I spoke with the landlord at one of the storage yards. He has all the space available that I need to come into compliance. It's simply a matter of, like Commissioner Terrell said, I was anticipating the ability to use driveways as storage space, which I've been made aware that I can't, though there's nothing in the code that denies the ability to do that. I've accepted what the Police Department has said and will make that change immediately if we can get past the three-year rule.
So, what you're telling me is your landlord has said he has additional space that he could make available?
Absolutely. And this was confirmed yesterday. I did call him. It's just a matter of changing the fence line.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That was really kind of my question about coming into compliance and that I was wondering about the, and maybe this is for Mr. Colon, part of the verbiage, on the 20,000 feet, as Mr. Boucher's understanding of whether it was storage space or just gross space. I don't know if you're that intimate with it at this point in time or...
I understand the police rationale is that if the driveway is blocked with stored vehicles, they'll need to be moved out onto the street at some point in order to get access ingress and egress. So, the Police Department's interpretation, again, for the council to consider, is just that, that the blocking ingress and egress doesn't work functionally.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Officer Wytham said that this could mean one or two toes a day for you, is that right?
Yes.
I don't want to delve into your business too much, but a toe represents 50 or $100 or what?
Significantly more than that. It's $198 for a toe. We charge $44 a day. This is city rates among all the tow operators, again, approved by the Fire and Police Commission and possibly City Council.
So, I'm guessing this represents business in the tens of thousands or maybe hundreds of thousands of dollars?
This is a huge revenue for us and that's why I mentioned it could be the tipping point for our business.
I see. City Attorney, and is that a consideration that we are, we have here, we're talking about, as you said, property rights before?
I don't think it is, the word is probative. I don't think it directly proves any of the issues in front of you. You can take it into account as you're weighing the equities of how to interpret the code, but the amount of money at stake doesn't directly bear on either the lot size or the number of years in operation.
Okay, thank you. One last question. You said county records indicate that you have, on the parcels, that you have enough space, although the police, I think correctly, interpret that you'd need to have egress and ingress and that would reduce you before by about 1% or 10%, 5% below the required amount, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Question for the City Attorney. Remind me what the regulations say about the 20,000 square feet? Is it 20,000 square feet or is it 20,000 square feet of storage space?
I don't have that handy. Perhaps Captain Wytham does.
Or Captain Wytham?
Madam Mayor, under 2F, it's 20,000 square feet of storage space.
That's what it says in the regulations. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll go, we have, I think, I have two slips, but I think only one person's here and Alicia Drew had to leave, correct? And I know she was, when she spoke earlier, she was in favor of 805 towing, so we know what she was going to say, but then Reggie Drew, come on up. what she was going to say, but then, Reggie Drew, come on up.
My name is Reggie Drew. I'm here to support Mr. Boucher on the 805 towing. In my opinion, the suspension of a city towing rotation is unjust and unfair. It seems to me that the city rotation list participants in good standing at the time with the Santa Barbara Municipal Code Section 530020 was adopted should be allowed to continue. To blatantly punish companies that have complied with all existing requirements at the time they were authorized to be included in the city rotation is very harsh and unfair. I ask the mayor and city council not to consider just the issues of fair play, but also the impact of the suspension that has conned Mr. Boucher and his employees. As a resident of Santa Barbara, we have taken pride of having city government that is responsible and fair. We ask you to demonstrate this one more time by reversing the suspension of 805 towing. Thanks.
Thank you. Do you have a question for him? No? Oh, okay. Okay, it's to the council. Ms. Mario, you've been itching to deliberate, so you can go first.
I think everyone who has come here today has come in good faith and done their work, and I respect everyone's opinions. To me, what the nugget here is that 805 roadside towing was approved with the six-month requirement for your business license, and however you were approved with whatever storage space you had at the time, you got the green light and to be part of the city's presence and our, taking care of our roads, taking care of our residents. And I think in fairness, my vote is that you should retain your spot in the rotation. You say you can fix the storage issue. I guess that remains to be seen. I would assume Officer Hunter would go out and take a look at that. I think, not to use the word grandfather, grandmother, but you were approved at six months, and that shouldn't be changed in midstream on you. And I'm hearing that you're not a bad apple. I'm hearing that you're a good apple, that no one has any complaints about you. So, I would hope that I could make a motion like that, and that it would meet the city attorney's standards, since we're in an elevated decision-making process here. And I would, I understand that the police and fire commission, the Fire and Police Commission, wanted to stick to the rules, and I believe you did what you thought was correct. When things are appealed to us, I'm ready to take the heat for making some wiggle room, if indeed that's what we're going to do, by allowing you to stay in our rotation. Can I ask the city attorney if that would, would that meet all legal standards, what I'm proposing, sir?
I think as to the lot size, you'd want to say the suspension would remain in effect until they satisfy the police department that they've expanded the lot sufficiently.
Okay. Well, I'll not say anymore, because other people need to speak.
Thank you. Mr. Francisco.
I appreciate the work that the Fire and Police Commission has done coming up with these new rules. At the same time, I see the purpose of regulation as achieving a goal, and the goal is not strictly adherence to the regulation. The goal is to achieve an effect, in this case, as Captain Widdam described, a professional level of service to the customers that the police department can represent as their own, and that puts both the department and the city itself in a good light. It appears from what Captain Widdam has said that all the companies currently on this list have met that requirement, and it seems to me that the change from six months to three years intuitively, I don't understand. I mean, the point of the three years is to make sure that you're getting a professional level of service from the companies that you put on this list. If you felt you were getting a professional level of service from 805 towing before, I don't see why that would change just because the regulation changed. So, it seems to me you've achieved the goal that the regulations were put into place, and I agree that perhaps the regulations needed to be more strict, but I don't believe anyone who is currently on the list needs to be thrown out because of a rule change. And I agree with the city attorney that if 805 towing does come into compliance in terms of the storage area, and it does seem like there was a misinterpretation there to begin with on their part, if they do come into compliance with that, I see no reason to maintain the suspension. So, I would argue that as soon as that deficiency is remedied, that they should be back on the list. Thank you.
Mr. Hart?
I agree with council members, Mario and Francisco, and I just want to particularly appreciate Commissioner Christensen and Commissioner Terrell. I thought you both made a very vigorous defense of your positions. I thought that was really helpful and very respectful and very professional, speaks very well to the police and fire commission, and I appreciate that very much. But I come down in agreement with my colleagues that I think in this instance, we can accept 805's status, conditional on them coming up with the additional storage space in regards to their experience level.
Mr. Hachakis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, this is a classic example of two folks, in this case represented here, doing their very best, and I think cogently so, coming up with different conclusions. My colleagues have said, "Well, my feelings also about this," and I'd like to see, keep this man in business, as I think you probably would, too, but also comply with the rules that you have set down. So, at which point they do, then they should be back in the rotation. How do we, can we make that a motion now, sir?
Yes.
So, I think it's clear what I'm saying is that we uphold the appeal, that the suspension remains until to the satisfaction of the commission and the police, that they are in compliance with the storage requirement.
So, actually, before, there's a second. I think the recommendation is that the motion should include that the city attorney come back with particular findings that would include upholding the appeal due to specific findings.
Agreed.
And just a quick clarification, is the suspension enforced right now, or are they still under the rotation because it was pending this hearing?
Madam Mayor, because it was pending, they're still on the rotation list, pending the outcome of this meeting.
All right. So, just, so I don't think there is a suspension to waive, but the expectation would be that you would meet the 20,000-square-feet right away, I guess, or give them a time to do so under the, well, Mr. Cologne, if there's a way to...
Well, it's important they comply with what the commission has said, so...
I think the council should come up with a reasonable time certain for them to come into compliance on the lot size.
Okay.
You don't want to rely solely on a representation tonight, only to have it turn out not to be. And I think the council can act without further findings if you want to state the motion on the path that you're headed.
So, let's...
Don't need to come back with findings because we're upholding the appeal rather than denying the appeal?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
So, then let's just add a time element to that, and we'll give them four months to come into compliance.
So, the motion is to uphold the appeal and to make the 20,000-square-foot compliance you're mentioning within four months?
Correct.
Is there a second to that?
It sounds a little long to me.
What?
He could do it in one month.
30 days is better.
Is there a second to 30 days?
Second.
Okay. All right. So, into the motion, then, another comment, Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a brief one, and that is that the, first of all, I agree with the comments of my colleagues, but I also, having been the liaison to the Fire and Police Commission, I appreciate the work that's gone into constructing the new towing rules and making them more consistent regionally. I think that was just, that's a place where we just all need to be able to work more smoothly. So, I think that the conversation was a good one, and I appreciate the work of all concerned, and also the presentation of the appellant. I think it was a very civil and cogent and clean, nice, clean presentation on both sides, but I do support my colleagues on this one.
Mr. Rouse?
We're all singing kumbaya up here, but I do see, I do see the logic behind the three years as opposed to six months, but I do also see the inherent unfairness of somebody already status quo and having to retroactively apply. But my one question for the appellant, if you wouldn't mind, is you mentioned something, there was a little bit of a chicken and egg thing here about getting, about attaining the extra property, but your potential landlord for that property needed to have some assurance that you had secured, the contract, is that...
It was the, are you reading from my original letter or from what I just...
I'm just going off of what you've said that I...
What I said today, I haven't basically gotten that other space, because I wanted to wait and see what would happen here today.
Okay. And you're confident that within 30 days, you're going to be able to accomplish that so you can satisfy...
Absolutely.
The PD's requirements for the 20,000-square-feet?
Absolutely.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hart, did you have something else? Okay. You're going to have a 7-0 vote here. I do appreciate the Fire and Police Commission's process in upgrading the regulations. To me, the clincher, as was mentioned, Section C, about the three years, had to do with prior to application for inclusion while he was already included. That was, that was a big point to me. I'll go with, and we agreed on the regulations back in September as a council, that, I mean, the 20,000, and I'll agree with the motion and the rules moving forward to be consistent, but I think on a practical level, even though you have 20,000-square-feet of storage, it's going to be different components. There might be, I just find it interesting, doing this and thinking about it, why we didn't say for X number of cars or something like that, a minimum number, because you could have 20,000-square-feet of storage that could fit a different number of vehicles, depending on the configuration of the storage space. I don't want to open that up again, but, so, I'm not going to, but it was just sort of a thought of, well, how is this, you know, just a question that went through my mind. And I'll just finally say, I understand, because I know that city staff, when they get rules about being in code compliance, or when there's a complaint, you have to follow the municipal code. You can't change the rules because you don't like them. And I believe that's what the deliberations of the commission was doing, was like, these are the rules, and you have to follow the rules. However, what the outcome of denying this permit was going to be a significant change in this person's lifestyle and business, and I kind of thought, well, could there have been a better way to ask the question at the Fire and Police Commission about this three-year piece as opposed to, you know, having this company and these individuals go through the, what must have been a very stressful process of an appeal, thinking that they might lose a very large component of their business plan and their business? So, and I don't know if that was a, if there was a way to bring in counsel at that point, our city attorney's office, to look at the regulations and give an opinion before making a final determination, but this was, it was a pretty significant vote that you made, and because it was so, it was split, it was a 3-2 vote, too. I think, you know, I just kind of wonder, we try to make things easier, not harder, as a city to move forward with our rules and regulations and be consistent, but we also don't want to be the bad guy, and I know that's not what you were trying to be, because you were doing your job. I just kind of wonder if there was a better way to get to this point than the way that happened. So, just some thoughts about the process, but I think we're at the right decision here. Okay, any other comments? So, we have a motion to, so we don't need to come back with findings, but the motion is to uphold the appeal with the expectation that the 805 towing will reach their 20,000-square-foot requirement by, within 30 days. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay. We have council committee assignment reports. Ms. Mario?
Thank you. I attended the MTD Board meeting today, and the staff is recommending increasing services for lines one and two, and for buses that takes city college students from Isla Vista up to the campus. They're also, again, recommending the elimination of Line 22, and I think part of what's going on there is that the Ellen Canto Hotel is shuttling their employees up there. Maybe that bears more discussion, I'm not sure. I think Sherri Fisher of the MTD was going to come and speak to us about that. I attended a totally fun thing. The fire department had a poker tournament this weekend to raise money for a fireman who has cancer, and I expressed my best wishes to Kevin Corbett and the Corbett family. The public library had its adult literacy luncheon this weekend. I congratulate Beverly Schwartzman for that excellent program. It's just so much fun. I'm so glad I was there. On the serious note, the Living Wage Committee is reviewing whether the city's vendors are really paying the living wage, and I'll be back with the report on that. Thank you.
You. Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended the regular meeting of the Downtown Parking Committee, and they're getting their stuff ready for their budget presentation, including the new PBIA for the upcoming year. Another meeting I attended was the Fighting Back Steering Committee, which is an offshoot of CADA, and at that meeting, we talked about, obviously, drugs and alcohol, but we also had Sheriff Bill Brown and Officer Cam, or Chief Cam Sanchez there, and we reviewed the Deltopia evening, and having heard that, having seen films and having seen tape, I'm so impressed by the professionalism and the restraint of our officers in action out there in Isla Vista. It could have been so much worse, given what those guys went through and what they faced. I'm amazed, and I was amazed, the DA has also mobilized her team of counselors and whatnot for those who suffered other unmentionable times of offenses, but really, a shout-out to our people in uniform. They really did an amazing job in a really tough situation.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In their relentless surge, or it isn't a surge, it's just a relentless optimism, the Mesa architects held a, yet another charrette on improvements to Cliff Drive in Las Pecitas, and are definitely working hard to come up with the next set of great ideas for which there isn't any known funding. But they're working hard at it, and they brought a great group of people together, of Mesa residents, to continue the visioning process, and I'm sure we'll be continuing to hear from them as the months and years go by on this topic.
Mr. Hachakis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just an amplification about the MTD. Unfortunately, that's not the shuttling process that's the reason they're not using the buses, it's that everybody's parking by Orpitt Park and then walking up to Ellen Canto, so we really haven't solved that problem. But above and beyond that, and not in official capacity, I went to one of our principal private sector employers here in town, Sonos, which has become a, is fast becoming a well-known international company, and they have a unique philosophy, I think, in that they decided long ago that no matter how much they grew, they were not going to leave downtown Santa Barbara. So, they are now in five different locations with more than 300 employees, and they're not going to go. And I think they'll probably double in size. Obviously, parking is a big problem for them and some other things. I know the city is aware of this, but they are really anxious, and I think have successfully worked with the city to remain a part of downtown, which they just love, and it was so refreshing to hear that attitude, not, "If you don't do this, we're going to CARB." So, welcome to them, and I hope we find more.
Mr. Hart?
Well, in addition to being a loyal Sonos customer myself, I always tended the Neighborhood Advisory Committee Council meeting, and they have an interesting problem in that they are trying to administer the neighborhood improvement grants, these sort of micro grants that they're trying to figure out a way to reward neighborhoods with improvements, and one of the dilemmas that they're running into is that the constraints on those grants are that they need to be spent on public property, they need to not really be infrastructure-related, they're relatively modest, and so they sort of point in the direction of doing parkway planting improvements. And now we have a drought, and we have a serious problem with water, and so they have been working diligently for quite a long time to get to this point, to have a number of candidate projects that involve parkway improvements and plantings, only to be kind of confronted with the reality of the water situation that we're in. So, they have, they don't have an answer to that dilemma, but it is, it's a real dilemma, and they're going to have to work through that.
Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As a member of the Kachuma Operation and Maintenance Board Ad hoc Drought Contingency Committee, we made a recommendation of the full board, which is having a special meeting tomorrow, to approve the decision that was made by all of our district managers to go forward with one particular contractor on the... forward with one particular contractor on the emergency pumping project for Lake Kachuma, and I'm confident that the full board will approve that tomorrow.
The Sustainability Committee met last week and heard a great report from Jim Dewey and others about the energy savings that we recommended that the full council hear at some point soon, but it's incredible, the proactive work and how that's both saving money and energy citywide. So, stay tuned for that. I think it's a great report. And on a lighter note, I got to speak at a Santa Barbara beautiful tree dedication ceremony for, in memory of Hughl Hauser. Ha! How's it going, right? That's how he would speak. He was a frequent visitor of Santa Barbara, and the, it's the, one of the two Cota sister trees, so there's still going to be the Cota trees. It's on the side of the Mission, and one of the trees actually had fallen, but it's actually growing, it's still alive, and it's growing back, which is kind of interesting. But it's the one that didn't fall that we're putting in memory of Hughl Hauser. It was a very nice ceremony, so that happened on Friday. So, a lot going on around the city. I don't think we even mentioned all of it. So, we have one closed session item.
Item 16, conference with labor negotiator.
Okay. And then we will adjourn from there. Thank you very much.